Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, May 12th. City Hall Chambers, City Council is open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at this meeting. This time we'll call Pastor Don Steriano from Kingdom Life Church, Christian Church, to give us our invocation. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In observance to Police Week, my prayer will be focused on our wonderful folks in blue. The affections of my heart burn for the local and national law enforcement in our nation. In a climate where there is hate towards police, I would like to affirm that I believe that is not the sentiment of the majority of Americans. You are loved, significant, needed, honored, and we celebrate you today and this week. You are our heroes, divine agents of the Almighty God to sustain order on the earth. In part, you are vessels to help bring to pass the portion of the Lord's Prayer, His kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. Would you bow your heads, please? Father of heaven and earth, I lift up our valiant law enforcement officers before you now. I ask that you and all of heaven would take notice and honor this prayer for these who have vowed and dedicated their lives to serve and protect your children on the earth whom you so dearly cherish and love. I pray that your mighty hand and outstretched arm would go before them in the battle of justice, anointing them as your agents of divine order, so to foil the deeds of those who plot evil. I ask of you, Holy Spirit, to envelop each of them with the peace of Christ that transcends understanding, guiding them with the wisdom of Solomon as they guard the citizens of our nation. Grant them the courage and the strength of King David to defeat the Goliaths of wrongdoing, and also impart upon them the loving kindness of David the Shepherd, to serve with compassion and a gentle hand, discerning when to be as a lion and when to be as a lamb. And as they all prepare to deploy on their noble assignments, I declare Isaiah 54:17 over them all, "That no weapon formed against them shall prosper; and every tongue which rises against them in judgment shall be brought down." This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and their righteousness is from me, says the Lord. I pray, O Lord, that you would dispatch and assign warring angels of great might and power to protect them and keep them from harm. I declare over them strong, long, blessed, prosperous, and a fruitful life. I pray that you would grant an overwhelming peace to their loved ones, reminding every mother, father, wife, and husband, son, and daughter, that you, the Creator of the universe, has them all in his mighty hands. In the name of Jesus the Christ, our Lord and King, that I pray this all. Amen.
Please join our police officers and staff in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Beauchamp, proclamations?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have three proclamations today that I will read on your behalf. First, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Police Week, May 9th through 15th, 2021, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th, 2021. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week. And whereas the members of Florida law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. And whereas it is essential that all Florida citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their unwavering commitment to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them from violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas it is appropriate to commemorate police officers past and present, who have dedicated their service to their communities and demonstrated utmost courage in preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And whereas on May 15th, we honor all peace officers, who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Police Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in activities honoring our police and peace officers. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you. It won't take a lot of time. Obviously, you see a large number of my staff present, and it was by design that I wore this mask today. That simply says the word hero. We're being recognized today for Police Week. It's more in honor of the folks that we have lost over the past year. As you know, last year was a devastating year for law enforcement because of COVID. This year has become a devastating year, I hear that too, because of gun violence that we're seeing throughout the nation. In fact, just this weekend and through this week alone, we've lost three officers in the country to gun violence responding to calls, domestic violence, to a traffic accident, you name it. It's been quite horrific. These folks right here are your community heroes. I don't want to leave out the fire department because they're the same. We're the ones who run into burning buildings. We're the ones who run into situations where there's gunfire, there's armed people, there's dangerous circumstances, and all these folks surrounding me do it without hesitation because they love this community. They love every person who lives here, and they want to see this community thrive and grow, and they're willing to do that without care or thought of their own lives and their own family. And this is simply a good reminder for all of us as to what we're willing to do, these heroes behind me are willing to do every day for you all and for everybody out in the audience. They're willing to lay down their lives, and I don't want anybody to ever minimize that of what they really stand for in this community. So thank you for the honor, and to my officers and staff, thank you for what you do every day. You're my heroes. We are a great agency, not because of me, but because of you, and I love you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beauchamp?
Next, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Salvation Army Week, May 10th through 16th, 2021. Whereas the Salvation Army was founded in 1865 by William Booth and continues to be a leader in serving the people of our community with unshakable faith, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities. And whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all the residents of our community with neither salvation nor any other conditional prerequisite, nor expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community support. And whereas on average, they serve 150 meals each evening, and more than 75 people seek emergency shelter nightly. In addition, they operate youth mentoring programs, Angel Tree and Adopt a Family programs, and holiday kettle drives. And whereas the Salvation Army provides relief during natural disasters and crisis situations. Locally, they have approximately 300 volunteers dedicated to helping our community when the need arises. And whereas the Salvation Army continues helping our community during the COVID-19 pandemic by keeping their shelters open and administering CARES Act funding to over 300 families to ensure they could reside in their own homes. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 10th through 16th, 2021, as Salvation Army Week, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who renew the heart of our community by their quiet service and compassion. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all, allow us to be in this community and serving and helping those that are in need, and it's a privilege to us doing that every day. We never close, almost like the fire department and the police, you know, 24/7, and we feel part of this community, feel part of the police and the fire department, and again, it's an honor to be part. And I want to say to my staff, they're the one. I'm a passing parade. They're the one who every day comes, and we have also board members, advisory board, some of the board members with us, and we thank them because of what they do also and represent to this community here in Bradenton. Thank you again. Thank you for allowing us to do this.
And finally, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor by the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month, May 2021. Whereas the Healthy Teens Coalition of Manatee County and its teen health educators, who proudly serve as youth health advocates, actively support a continued comprehensive approach to addressing teen pregnancy prevention and associated health problems in our youth. And whereas Healthy Teens Coalition's Teen Health Educator Program has been lauded nationally and throughout the state of Florida as a model program for successful reduction for high-risk behaviors and critical health issues in our youth, including teen pregnancy, mental health issues, e-cigarette use, STDs, bullying, as well as conflict and anger management. And whereas Manatee County has reduced teen births among youth age 15 to 19 by over 61% over the last nine years, with repeat teen pregnancies for the same time period down by 74.66%. And whereas youth health has suffered during COVID and must remain a strong focus in our community, particularly with the dramatic rising Manatee County youth rates of serious mental health issues, sexually transmitted diseases, increases in electronic cigarette use, and higher teen birth rates than the state average among our local teens aged 15 through 19. And whereas Healthy Teens Coalition and our community partners provide services to vulnerable youth in our community, and in 2020, teen health educators provided critically needed health information and mentoring to over 2,200 local youth. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month in Bradenton. And we do have a special acceptance of this proclamation this morning that we'd like to share.
Hello, my name is Leah Yarn. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior attending Padilla High. I'm also a teen health educator for the Healthy Teens Coalition. On behalf of the Healthy Teens Coalition of Manatee County, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for recognizing May as the Teens Pregnancy Prevention Month in our community. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Bronson Impso. I'm 15, and I'm a teen health educator for the Healthy Teens Coalition. We sincerely appreciate this proclamation, and thank you for your support of Healthy Teens Coalition's efforts to reduce risky behaviors by providing Manatee County youth with the knowledge and skills they need to make informed choices about their physical, mental, and emotional health and wellbeing.
Hello, my name is Denise Pinoz. I'm 16 years old, and I'm part of the Teen Health Coalition. We know that teens are less likely to suffer the devastating consequences of teen pregnancy or other consequences of risky behaviors if they receive medically accurate information. Research also shows that they are more likely to listen to us, their peers, if we provide them with this info.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Cortez Albin. I'm 15 years old and a healthy teen educator for the Healthy Teens Coalition. As a teen health educator, we have undergone seven weeks of training in order to provide peer education and peer mentoring to our fellow community youth, including educating teens on critical health information and life skills.
Hello, my name is Hannah Verena. I'm a teen health educator for Healthy Teens Coalition. We educate teens on critically needed information such as health info and life skills. This includes COVID-19 safety, trauma, self-coping skills, the dangers of e-cigarettes, anger and conflict management, as well as bullying, social media, leadership skills, and numerous other topics.
Hello, my name is Josh, and I am 16 years old. I'm a healthy teen educator for Healthy Teens Coalition. Through my own experiences of serving as a healthy teen educator for my peers, I see the huge need that young people have for programs like Healthy Teens Coalition and opportunities to learn this important information to keep ourselves healthy and safe.
Hi, my name is Juliana Kici. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a teen health educator for Healthy Teens Coalition. Recognitions like this proclamation truly contribute to community success in reducing our community's teen birth rates.
Hi, my name's Ella Stefan. I'm 17 years old and a teen health educator for the Healthy Teen Coalition. Thank you for joining us in this cause. We appreciate you, our elected leaders, working with us to continue to make our community a safe, healthy, and happy place for all of our local youth to live.
Thank you. Very nice. All right, moving on. I don't see Senator Boyd. Oh, there he is. He walked in the back corner, so I was looking for him so hard. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for the invitation, Mayor, and there's a nice crowd, so I was trying to blend in if I could.
Something you didn't have in Tallahassee this year?
Well, the House did, the Senate, I guess since we're all older, they protected us a little bit.
Protected yourself.
But it's wide open now, as of last Friday. Even the Senate is open, so the Florida Capitol is wide open, and we did make arrangements to accommodate visitors and guests and testimony, public testimony that's so important to the process, but it was a little awkward and a little different than normal, so I'm looking forward to next year when we're kind of all back in the same mode that we're in. But Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. I'll be kind of brief, but I wanted to give you a little bit of update about Tallahassee and maybe some of the things that mattered to our community, but first, and most important, I have to kind of pile on, if you will, with the Law Enforcement Week and then our first responders in general. And I could not be prouder to represent a community that has such strong and faithful and dedicated law enforcement and first responders. I was thrilled to see the chief, I think she's still, yeah, in Tallahassee week before last for that nice award, and she got, she was on the House floor, and I was able to go over and visit with her there, but when I walked in the door, the first thing, the sergeant and some of those folks I knew from my term in the House said, "Oh, your chief's here. She's a rock star." I'm like, "Yeah, I know that. Thanks for recognizing it so quickly," but they were impressed with her from the get-go, and certainly we are all as well. And while you have a good staff, and she's quick to give credit to the team and to her officers and the administrative folks, it takes a great leader, and she is a terrific leader and doing a great job for our community, so I'm very proud to call her our police chief, even though I live just a little bit outside the city, but still very proud of that. And it was nice that the governor and the House and the Senate recognized law enforcement in some small way by the bonuses that are being given out for first responders. I know that's not a huge amount of money, but to some, that's a lot of money, and it makes a difference, and I hope they understand what that means from us to them and from taxpayers, more importantly, to them, and thanking them for their service, so. Couple things, high-level deals, issues I wanted to just mention to you. As you know, the state budget this year was a little over $100 billion, which is kind of an incredible number when you think about it. Some of that was buoyed by the federal dollars that were coming down from the taxpayers, essentially, but from the federal government, and a lot of that, and it doesn't impact Bradenton directly, but I think certainly as a community and indirectly it does, was the Piney Point issue, and that affects all of us in our quality of life and the water and the land around it and so on. So I was thrilled to be part of, as was Representative Robinson and Representative Gregory, securing funding for not just the problem and taking care of that, but also the bigger problem of restoration of the property and putting that situation behind us once and for all. So that, while we shouldn't have to do it as taxpayers, the folks that own the property aren't doing it and don't appear they're willing to do it or able to do it, so that's something we have to step up to do, and hopefully there'll be some way to get some of that back along the way. But nonetheless, a huge number, but for a very big problem that could become a major disaster for our area if we don't deal with it. So very, very happy we were able to do that. Some of the things locally that we were able to get some funding for, the fetal alcohol clinic, which is just across the border in Sarasota, it's the only one in the state and one of the best around, we were able to get some funding for that. Not a lot of money, but it was a lot of money to them, $275,000. Easter seals and some of the employment services education and a couple of other programs. Were able to fund Center Sun's psychiatric unit for some residency programs, which is very important. Early childhood court, Manatee schools, we got some money for the STEM Pathways Project, the State College of Florida for a nursing program, and then for a technology building a little bit further down in Venice, some beach improvement money and water, flood prevention improvements, if you will, on Holmes Beach and Longboat Key wastewater force main, a fair amount of money for that. And then the Moccaswell Walla Road that is important for the northern corridor of our community and all of the work and the development that's going on out there, that's part of what we were able to fund. So all in all, for Manatee County, I think it was a pretty good year in terms of funding in light of the fact that we went up thinking we were $4 to $5 billion in the hole. Revenues, as you know, were improving along the way, and estimates for those revenues were improving, which is good. And then with the federal money, we were able to augment some of the programs that we wanted to do. So Manatee County, we were, or at least my portion, and I think Representative Robinson will have some others that will add to this, but was about $119 million of funding. Of course, $100 million was Piney Point, but 19 to 20 million for the things we asked for in the Senate, and again, added to what Robinson and Representative Gregory asked for in the House, theirs will add to that number. I think that's a pretty good year for bringing taxpayer money back home to do things that are important here. A couple of, quickly, a couple of things I worked on that I think matter. One of them was actually, in light of what we just talked about a minute ago, was the swatting bill that I ran and we passed and waiting for the governor to sign, and real simply, some know about it, some don't, and the chief certainly does, but as a result, kind of an outgrowth of gaming and the gamers and the YouTubers some years ago. Sometimes they'd get mad at each other if one was winning and the other one was losing, and they would call a prank call into law enforcement and say, you know, my name, or this guy or gal or whatever that they were mad at has holding his wife or husband or friend hostage, they've got guns and explosives or whatever, you make up the scenario, and law enforcement, first responders, everybody was rushing to that scene, resources, danger, you know, putting lives in danger along the way, and then when they get there, you don't know what's going on, so somebody could even get hurt there, and there were no real penalties for that. So we put a statute, or when the governor signs it, will be in place, that adds pretty strong penalties to that issue if you are doing that. And it morphs into other things that are a little more nefarious, but it actually was an outburst of, I mean, an outgrowth of some of these gaming things. So I think that'll hopefully help our law enforcement and deter those types of activities. Another thing that we worked on was the property insurance crisis. Everybody that owns a home knows what their insurance prices have done over the past several years, and that's just gone up and up, and I won't belabor it, but lots of studies, lots of data indicated that, you know, through kind of scam programs out there with lawyers and kind of scam contractors or vendors, they were gaming the system to the extent that the numbers that I had were between 2013 and 2020, $15 billion of property insurance claims were paid in Florida, 15 billion. 71% of that 15 billion went to attorneys. 8%. 8% went to your constituents, our constituents that own homes and their, that had the claims, that actually had the claims, so something's wrong with that system. Across the country, 8% of property claims were attributed to Florida from, on a countrywide perspective. 76% of the lawsuits on a countrywide basis were attributed to Florida. And that's not to say there's not a lot of good lawyers out there, and that's not to say that some claimants need a lawyer to help them, and they do, and our bill provides for that, but it gets at the fraud and the misuse of the system, and I believe very firmly that it's not going to happen tomorrow, but as those measures are in place, that will drive premiums down, it'll drive capital back to Florida. The insurance markets in Florida over the past four to five years have lost money every year. Last year, they lost collectively a little over $1.7 billion, so there's a problem, but hopefully this will trans, hopefully, and I expect it to translate into lower premiums for our friends and neighbors and our constituents. I also worked on a port bill that took a kind of a life of its own, and it was as a result of a community a little bit south of us and some residents down there that the city council didn't want to do anything, but some residents got together and banned cruise ships from the port over a certain size, and we started looking at that issue, and the harbor pilots actually brought the issue to me, although the tweets in the news report says that the cruise industry brought it to me. They did not. I rarely, if ever, talked to them during the process, but it had broader implications for the 15 seaports around the state. That's a source of, you know, maritime commerce, and if some initiative somewhere banned, let's say Tampa used the example a couple of years ago, somebody on the council up there proposed a referendum that would ban fossil fuels from coming into the port of Tampa. 50% of the state's oil supply comes in through the port of Tampa, so you can imagine if that went through, what it would do. So ours just, legislation that we passed and presuming the governor will sign it, precludes local initiatives from interrupting what we call federal, or what we think is federal maritime commerce. So hopefully, and I've talked to our port all along the way to make sure they were comfortable with it, and they were, so hopefully that deters those types of things from happening in the future. Education, good, you know, good funding there, I believe, and the transportation work program, water projects, a lot of things were funded and a lot of good was done. I think it was, it was an unusual session, as we started out by saying, Mayor, with the, you know, the House being open a little bit and the Senate not being open so much, but I still think we got good work done, and I think there's work yet to do, but on balance, I think it was a good session. We tried to remember our friends at home and the jobs that you do and, you know, your connection to your constituents, and wanted to do what we could to support that and make our connection with all of us serving the same community stronger and better, and that's my intention as long as I'm allowed to serve, to do that and to work with you all. So happy to, I could go on, but I won't because you've got a heavy agenda, but happy to answer any questions, Mayor, if there's any.
Well, we appreciate it, and I know, you know, you spent eight years up there now, another year going into it, and we hope you spend seven more, but it's an honor to have you here today and also to serve our community. As a local businessman that, and family that's been around this community for a long, long time, to give back is very honorable, and we're very proud to have you as our senator, as well as a friend, and you answer the phone when we call, so we appreciate that. So anybody else have anything? Yes, Mr. Roth?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank you for the work we've done with the Piney Point Resolution. I hope that this is going to follow through. I'll just share with you that through my involvement with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, they have an agency on bay management, which is the Tampa Bay estuary, one of the oldest in the area. Back in the 70s, Tampa Bay was dead. I mean, D-E-A-D, dead. And, you know, it's taken all this time to clear this up, and, you know, I've always been afraid of that. Every time I drive by those stacks up there on my, that's my back road to downtown Tampa is up 41, and, you know, it's an environmental time bomb, and, you know, because of the foreclosures and, you know, the DEP a long time ago, you know, there's been missed opportunities. I thank you for your assistance. I hope you follow through and get that site shut down, sealed off, and because, you know, one environmental disaster, even though it's not, it's not our business, it will, it would kill Tampa Bay, you know, 4 million people, 4 million people enjoy the waters in this area, and, you know, it's just, you know, it's going to take state involvement, and I'm glad you guys have stepped in, and please don't stop short of total shutdown. I mean, it needs to be drained, sealed off, and forever, you know, I don't know what will ever be done with the land, but we can't, we can't allow rainwater to ever fill that back up.
If I could just briefly thank you, Councilman Roth, for that, and you're 100% right, and there were missed opportunities, and, you know, there's no sense crying, as we say in the Bradenton over spilt milk, but, you know, we have to deal with it, and it's our responsibility to deal with it now. Noah Valenstein, Secretary of DEP, is on my speed dial. I just talked to him the day before yesterday, and I will continue to. They are all over it. The plan right now is, as you probably know, is they're treating the water and getting it, you know, the water in the one stack that was breached was thankfully the best water of any out there, and it was being, some of it, as you know, released into Tampa Bay. DEP and scientists were there every day monitoring that water to make sure it wasn't harming, you know, the marine life and the like, and we were confident that it wasn't. But still, it needs to be treated. The other stacks are, the waters are a little more problematic, so they're being treated, and the plan- So, they're being treated, and the plan is, and the permits will be issued to do a deep well injection and deal with the water that's there. Some of it will be tanked off, but some of it is, most of it will be down below the Boulder Zone and, and deep well injected. And then the, the Senate President, Wilton Simpson, and I, he owes, we owe him a huge amount of the credit because he called me and said, Jim, I got good news and, and better news. I'm like, well, that's awesome. What's up? He goes, I'm going to, I want you to fund, he's funding, Piney Point, the fix, which we'd asked for in the, in the budget, but also the restoration of the property. I said, what does that mean? He said, well, that's the great news, up to 100 million and plus if we need it. So, Wilton Simpson stepped up, the House joined us, the governor certainly is on board, and that is for fixing the problem that's there now, which is underway, and then closing the property forever and restoring it. And that's a huge, huge, huge cost because of those deep stacks, as you, as you know, filling those and getting them, getting them back to, you know, kind of regular land, if you will. I don't know what the disposition of the property will be down the road. I've encouraged DEP and the Attorney General and the governor to stay on top of it, as I know they will, to, you know, if we're, we taxpayers are spending all that money, we ought to be able to get the property back and then do something with it. Sadly, I don't think it'll ever be worth 100 million dollars, but we should get something out of it, whatever that is, I don't know down the road. But I promise you, that's a priority for not just me, but for your representatives as well, because we talk about it all the time, and it's, it's critical that we finish it, and it's underway. I mean, I'm 100% confident that we will get this project completed and restored and not have to worry about it again. But thank you, we will stay on it.
Thank you. All right, excuse me. Excuse me. This is not the place or the time right now that Senator's speaking in a presentation. We can get public comment, you can ask questions later, so that's not appropriate, so. Thank you, Senator.
You bet. And I was going to say, to the point there, anybody, anytime you know how to get a hold of me, my office is right down the street, if I can be of service to you or the community, that's what we're here for. So, call my office, I'll be happy to answer any, your questions or any of the public's questions anytime.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks very much for having me. Thanks.
All right. At the point of citizen comment, I have a card for Betty Sale Rhodes. Could come forward, please. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Oh, Mayor, I need to ask somebody.
Come up.
I need to show some pictures.
Okay.
To get to my point.
Okay, she can put them on the screen there.
All right, my name is Betty Sales Rhodes, 10726 Street East. I'm coming before the mayor and the councilmen. I need to ask a question. Well, I'm going to say, I'm here about code enforcement, and I don't know if whoever doing the code enforcement for the center of Bradenton on Martin Luther King Avenue West going towards east, is they being biased or they just got a pick? Because this place right here, I do patronize and everything, can you see it?
Oh, she's getting it on right now.
She's turning it on.
Yep, there.
Leave it there, leave it there.
Turn it the other way.
No.
No, up, face up.
I, I did.
Yeah, well, it wasn't turned on yet.
I did, you know I know how to do it.
Turn it to the, yep, perfect.
You got it?
Yeah, we can see it, but turn, it's sideways.
Sideways?
Nope. Right there, right there. Perfect, thanks, Ms. Rhodes.
Nah, we had those things.
Betty Lou.
Okay, this right here is 720, just on Martin Luther King Boulevard. And you see, it don't need no paint or anything because he keeps his place clean. And yes, I do go there. We have that privilege, like everybody else goes where they want to go at. Okay, this is on the side of his building, you don't see nothing. He got the garbage covered up and everything with the garbage disposal and everything. Now, my problem is this. Now, she took all that time, did she go here? Look at that. Did she, did she check this out? I'm trying to hurry up with my little... You see how that looks? Now, it's a strip mall further like east of 720, right on Martin Luther King, right before you get to Miller's Market. Now, you go in there, did she go back here? This is terrible. The sidewalks is all broken up, and whoever owned that, I'm going to call him a slum log because he's not taking care of that, just want the money from the people who is operating there. If you go in the bike, your car going to get tore all up. See right there, did she check that out? Right here. I mean, you turn, make a U-turn in that property, your tires and everything. So, I'm just wondering, this is a nitpick, you're doing that right here. This definitely turn on the middle of market. Doesn't need paint, did she go down there? I did my own because, you know, I will investigate when I see people is doing stuff. Now, right here is live oats. That do need a makeover. Did she go there? To check out?
What, what, why don't we have, I mean, with our planning director? And what was the, what's the question, real quick?
Okay, the question, okay, what I'm trying to say, Mayor Brown, is this. I think it's a nitpick. The guy is doing one of his place because I guess the name they had before, it used to be the old 801. The man have painted his place, you go inside, it's real nice in there. So, I think it's a pick because if he received this citation from the code enforcement did everybody else in that area, you understand?
So, there was a violation at 720?
Yes, and they need a paint of the building at some gate.
So, we'll have our planning department check into it through code enforcement and find out.
Yeah, that's the thing, because see, you know, I don't, you know, I come here with something on my mind, and I came here because I think that's a nitpick. And he is like a nephew to me, and yes, I'm going to support him there.
All right, well, we'll, we'll have him check into it and see, and then get back.
And you need to check in to the strip malls and all that. Thank you.
I've got your numbers.
All right, thank you.
All right, Glenn Gibellina?
Thank you. For the record, Glenn Gibellina, I apologize for my frustration with Senator Boyd, but I did attempt to talk to him yesterday at the county commissioners, and I have written several emails to him. He has yet to respond, and I have called his office, so I just want to bring some clarity to that. I, I just wanted some answers, and I haven't gotten it through the normal way, so. My other question is, is I did a records request on the, the budget for Habitat, and Scott put in fringe benefits. Scott, 29 pages. I can't find the definition of fringe benefits. So, I was wondering if you can bring some, some clarity to that. So, can anybody tell me what fringe benefits are on this contract? I mean, you approved it. So, that's a concern of mine. So, if you're, you know, you're approving things that you don't know what's in it, it, it's disturbing. So, let's talk about, this is just one example. So, I did a breakdown of that contract, and, you know, we get $435,000 in CDBG money, and we attribute 146,000 to the actual fixing of buildings. So, my concern is, you know, like the Sadowski funds, he rated it for two-thirds permanently. This fund's being rated for two-thirds. We can do a better job, we should be doing a better job. You know, we, we take out money for code enforcement, when you'd have to provide that service anyways. If, if we didn't have the funds next year and we had a complaint on code enforcement, you guys would go out there, you'd do your job. So, out of the 111,000, only 63 goes for the actual boots on the ground. We pay for everything else. You pay for the magistrates, pencils and papers. That is not good governance of monies that are supposed to be earmarked to fixing houses. We can do a better job. All I'm saying is that the funds that are going there, and by, and by the way, I am surprised, nobody brought up Senator Boyd, the funds. We're coming to you later today asking for $500,000 because those guys in Tallahassee has shorted us two-thirds of those funds forever. That should disturb you. It disturbs me. So, now, now smaller municipalities and counties have to struggle to make up those two-thirds of 450 million dollars a year. And by the way, Tallahassee, they're a billion dollars over budget from Ron DeSantis, what he said was going to do just for last, last month. They have the money. They didn't need to rob the Sadowski funds forever, so I will continue my advocacy on trying to straighten that out, but very disappointed in, you know, he voted to rob it when he didn't need to. He should have stood by the governor.
Thank you. Mr. Rudisell, Mr. Gibellina has an, an agenda item on the consent agenda. So, before we vote on that, should we let him talk to that?
I would suggest now would be his opportunity to address that.
Mr. Gibellina, if you want to come up also on the agenda item 5D, you want to make a comment?
Yes, I do.
5D is the, is the $500,000 I was just talking about. So, I, I really appreciate working with the Affordable Housing Board and trying to make up the difference here of how, what direction we're going to go on that money. And, and we have to start looking long-term that it looks like the two-thirds of the Sadowski funds will be permanently, will never come into this community again. So, how can we, we keep the same level of service and commitment to the, the folks that are struggling in affordable housing and need to get their, their windows fixed and their doors fixed when we're going to be short at that money? So, so I know you're going to have a tough job trying to find the money, I can tell. So, we need to start looking at different parts of revenue on how we're going to do that. So, I appreciate this coming up. I hope it's approved. It's going to be a, a fix to gap the difference between what the Sadowski funds and what we should have received and what hopefully you guys will approve today. But we shouldn't have to struggle like this, really. The, the, the Tallahassee has billions of dollars. They didn't need to stick their hand in the cookie jar for 300 million dollars a year to drop in the bucket up there. They should have left that fund alone. They should have stood by the governor and said, leave the Sadowski funds alone. Affordable housing, that's the whole idea. Not climate change, not sewers. So, thank you for, I hope this gets approved. It's a start, it's not going to be enough, but I think in the long-term, we better start seriously figuring out where we're going to get those funds. And, you know, that's all I can say, I'm glad, I'm glad it came forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby.
I just, for clarification, looking at the consent agenda item D, that is the appointment of an alternative code enforcement special magistrate. If I am understanding Mr. Gibellina correctly, he's talking about an item under new business?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, okay. No, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure I was clear and understanding.
All right. All right, so we have his comments early then?
Right.
All right, so good, thank you. All right, now we're at the point consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to approve the consent agenda with the understanding that item B, the minutes from the April 28th minutes are the revised versions that was distributed. There was a correction that needed to be made in the, the minutes.
There a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second? Discussion?
I'd like to pull item A.
Okay. All right, Ms. Barnaby, would you have opposed to pulling item A?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, so, we're going to approve consent agenda B through G. So, Mr., any further discussion? Starting the vote in Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders?
I'm in favor of, of moving forward with the rear rock extension phase two and three. Actually, I encourage that. I just want to make sure that we're not going, we're not going to get a review of stage two and three along the way, that we aren't bypassing anything that we might want to look at by doing this. In other words, if we want to say, hold on, we don't like, because we don't have these final drawings yet. Mr. Callahan, I think...
No, this, this, this is just the contract that gets them to be able to do the work you want them to do. That's all this is doing. Because we didn't currently have a price associated with the next two phases, so this is for that work, and they will bring us 60% drawings like we've done on the others, 90% drawings, so you have approval process all along before we get to finals and then get it priced out.
So, we will get, I saw an email from Kimberly Horn to the construction manager that, so we will get the drawings and the, back before this board...
Yes.
...to vote on. We're not bypassing that.
No, what we're doing is, one thing they are bypassing is the 30% drawings because they think through their discussions with you and, and all the concept drawings, there's no reason to go through that step. They ought to go right to 60% drawings, and that will save, save us monies. So, you'll get them at the 60% like we did before. We'll review them. They'll move forward towards the 90. At the 90%, when you approve them, then they'll get them priced, and we'll know at that point where we are price-wise and, and then move forward with construction.
Okay, I just want to make that matter of record. I'd like to see it in the minutes that, so that we, we will be able to come back...
Yes.
...with any questions we might have about that. Thank you.
All right, so, do you have a motion to approve A?
I have a motion to approve A.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Rudisell. You're next on the agenda.
Yes, I'll, I'll let Sharon read it in first, and then we can...
Ms. Bochamp, thank you.
We have the first reading of ordinance 379. An ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida relating to the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, GACRB, amending Chapter Two, Article Eight of the City of Bradenton Code of Ordinances to rename the GACRB as the Housing Committee, revising the requirements of the GACBR, or excuse me, it should be RB, Housing Committee, including incorporating provisions from Chapter Two, Article Seven, related to the Community, Community Relations Board, and providing from, and provisions from Chapter Forty-Six, Article Three, related to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, revising provisions of Chapter Two, Article Seven, relating to the Community Relations Board, amending Chapter Forty-Six, Article One, to revise the definition of Community Relations Board, revising provision of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Two, relating to the Community Relations Board, amending provisions of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Two, to change references from Community Relations Board to Housing Committee, revising provisions of Chapter Forty-Six, Article Three, to change references from Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, making related findings, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And again, this is a first reading, so we would ask that the second reading and public hearing be held on May 26th, and I'll turn it back over to Attorney Rudisell.
Yes, sir, Ms. Rudisell?
I like to keep Sharon on her toes with a really long title block.
And apologies for, it all started sounding the same there for a moment.
There's no action required today of the council. This is an ordinance that is proposed to, it does a, a few things. If you'll recall, there was a resolution a few weeks ago where we, we kind of updated and clarified the membership of the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board. This is kind of taking the next step. It is incorporating some legislative changes to the statutory requirements for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to incorporate those into our ordinance, and it is also clarifying the provisions regarding the makeup of the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, which we are proposing to rename as the Housing Committee, as that seems to incorporate what they're actually doing in a, in a better way to try and help clarify. As my understanding, there's, there's been some confusion over the last few years about the, the two boards and how they are, I guess, three boards and how they, they interact. So, this is intended to, to clarify that.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, this, this does help, help to clean that up. So that going forward, everybody will know exactly what board is, is the board, their responsibilities. Uh, also makes it a little easier, we incorporated all of the statutory, potential statutory members as well as a member from this board into being. So I think that in the future, it'll be easier to find the six that have to meet the statutory requirement as far as the other members. So it's a, it's a good move. It doesn't change any of their duties and responsibilities. It's just trying to get it in line, uh, with, I wanna say, state statute, which we have been, but further clarifies it so that there is one board, the Housing Committee. It has dual functions and it will be comprised of potentially eleven members, which is exactly as it is now, so.
And for concerned citizens listening in this audience, we will be able to get people on the board and have meetings when we can have a quorum present, so we don't waste anybody's time.
Yep.
So that's the goal and it's, you know, taken a few months to kinda get it worked out and to make sure we're doing it correctly. Mr. Sanders?
Yes. How did we, how did we, uh, get with the grants language of a board? I mean, where did, where did that come from?
The Grants and Assistance is what originally Planning Community Development was kinda called back in around two thousand. We started, it was Grants and Community Development. There were stuff, there was language in there that, that indicated that.
But isn't this, is this a state statute of affordable housing? So how did we?
Well, that's only a piece of it. The Grants and Community Relations Board serve two roles. One is as the Fair Housing Board, to review and, and, and investigate any fair housing complaints in the city of Bradenton. And that is one role, which was the, um, role of the Fair Housing-
And that still exists?
Yes, it does. As well as then the affordable housing component, which is consistent with state statute. But it had two roles and the same board did that, which it still will do. It will still do those same two roles. It was in, and, and the reason in two thousand and early two thousands, I, I believe, recall that we had trouble like we do now finding board members. You have ten-member board here and you have ten-member board there, serving almost the same function. We were never gonna be able to fill them. So I think they combined them into this Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, for lack of a better name, that served both, both those functions. And, and then we, um, we indicated in that resolution that they serve as the Affordable Housing Committee, okay? To make sure we were, we were on the right path there. But then we started appointing people to the housing, to the Affordable Housing Committee that didn't really exist. Because in our stat, in our ordinances, we did away with the Affordable Housing Committee that previously existed. So the only thing that remained was this Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, and we kept appointing people to the wrong board after a while. That's where we're trying, we cleared it up. They were still meeting, they were still doing the things they needed to do. But when I started investigating this probably about a year ago, I realized that, that we were not functioning the way we should according to the, our ordinance. So we wanted to clarify it. This is enabling legislation that clarifies everything and makes sure we're, we're in good stead going forward.
So I'm on that board? What board am I on?
You, you are on the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board.
And that is the same as affordable housing?
It serves as the Affordable Housing Committee. It's not the same as, it serves as. Similar to the way the DDA served as the, um, CRA board. So it serves as that responsible board.
Why didn't we just call it Affordable Housing? It'd do away with the, the grants and whatever.
Well, that's why we're calling it now the Affordable, the Housing Committee. Because-
Have we changed the, the, the authority or the, uh, what the board can do?
No.
Previous to what it did?
No.
Nothing's been changed?
It's clarifying only the board, the, the selection. It added to the list of the people who could potentially serve on that board.
I know we had a problem with, with-
So that's, that was my focus, was to make sure that that list was fully encompassing of the state statute and took into account our previous ordinances to make sure we could get eleven, a list of eleven potential people to serve on there, not individuals, but a good list to be able to select from. You know, it says somebody who represents affordable housing, someone who represents the city is a, is, is a, is a member now. So it was making sure that we had the best possible chance of finding eleven people to serve on that board. That's really what the clarification is mostly about.
Didn't find any money for us to use, did you?
Um, not yet. If you're looking, we can-
I'm just curious of why we changed the name?
Yeah.
When, when the county has affordable housing, we thought it was affordable housing. Now we're Grants and we don't have any money, but we're Grants.
Yeah, we've been Grants and Assist, Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board for nineteen years.
Nineteen years, we didn't know it.
We did early on, early on. I mean, early on, everybody was appointed to the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, and then by hook or crook, it started falling away because everybody recognizes Affordable Housing Committee by statute.
I just wanna make sure, if with you and council, that, that there's been no legal, um, authority given up or added?
No.
Or, or it's just, you know, it's just a language?
It's, it's a-
It's just a title?
It's a clarification. When we talked years, remember, all during the year, we've talked about clarifying the administrative section of the code because some things need clearing up. This is one of the sections of things that needed to be cleared up, and, and we're just going through that process.
So we're Grants and Assistance Board, um, from here forward?
No, we'll be-
Or we will be after the second-
After this, we'll be the Housing Committee.
Housing Committee, after the-
In two more weeks, we'll be the Housing Committee. You are the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board right now.
Who's the Housing Committee?
You will be in two weeks. After we pass this ordinance, you will be a two, who's on first? You will be the Housing Committee. And, and all the references to all these others will go away. You will be the Housing Committee.
And it'll serve the same purpose. We'll be able to have, we have right now enough members on it to, to have a meeting because we have a quorum. But the goal is, as you know, is I'm gonna need your assistance, all of the council people to come up with names. We'll get the proper, put them in the proper area and then we'll see who we need to fill those areas. Um, and we, I see a couple of board members out here in the audience now, as well as you, Mr. Sanders, so we'll, uh, we'll keep working through that. So we'll set the second reading and public hearing for May twenty-sixth. All, all done, so good. All right?
Sorry, it's so confusing, but that's the reason it took so long to try to get through it, was it was confusing to everybody and it was creating a problem.
Right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rudisell? At the public hearing-
No.
On May twenty-sixth. As we're just moving it forward. Mr. Rudisell?
Right.
Yep, and then we're going to the next, Sharon to read, S.
Yes, I can go ahead.
Yep.
If we're ready to move on.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to Robin. Sharon, go ahead.
Next is a quasi-judicial public hearing, so I'd like to administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address counsel during the following public hearing will stand and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. So this is a public hearing for item SU point-two-one-point-one-one-zero-eight. A request by Trevor Green, agent for Harold Ott, owner, for a special use permit to construct a residential boat dock longer than eighty feet in the R-one single-family residential zoning district. The property is located at twenty-seven-oh-five Riverview Boulevard, Bradenton, Florida, three-four-two-oh-five, parcel ID number three-four-seven-one-eight-one-zero-one-five-four. And again, this is a public hearing.
Robin? Or Myra? Morning.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. This is my first time before you and, well, all of our new members, welcome. And it's all good to, good to see you all. I do have a brief presentation and I'm hoping that this will be the simplest thing before you today.
Thank you.
Most of you are used to hearing about docks in the city. Sometimes they get complex. This one is not. This is a request at twenty, for the property at twenty-seven-oh-five Riverview Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a private dock. It's actually to replace a dock that is existing. That's a hundred-and-thirty feet long. It's been there since late eighties, I presume. We haven't been able to find any permitting records or special use records for it private. It's dilapidated and needs replacement. The owner is requesting to replace the dock with a dock that's two-hundred-and-ten feet long in order to reach navigable waters, which have, are substantially distant at this location. The property does have riparian rights, and this is noted in the legal description and recorded on the deed. I did mention that no prior special use had been discovered. Here's a location map. You can see it's Riverview Boulevard, um, on the west side and it has two portions of the property. Pardon me, it, um, the parcel does include the property that is across the right-of-way, but they do own it and have the riparian rights there. The property is in residential low future land use and is surrounded by such and is in R-one single-family residential zoning, also surrounded by such. The reason for a special use for this particular dock is, um, related to land use regulations, section five-point-one-point-two-point-one-four, that limits the length of a dock in a public waterway to eighty feet or twenty-five percent of the width of the waterway or closer to twenty-five feet to the center of any public channel, whichever is less. Of course, this is the Manatee River. Um, we're gonna go with the eighty feet, which is, by the way, as far as we can tell in planning, an arbitrary number. Going back for many years, looking at land use regulations, I do not know why eighty feet was chosen. And in many areas of the Manatee River, it just does not make sense. This is one of them. You can see a graphic here that shows your mean-high water line is approximately here. The neighboring docks also extend quite some distance. You can see, this is a good aerial view that shows you the shallows. And two-hundred-and-ten feet does extend even a little bit less than the neighbor. It is the minimum required, excuse me, according to the applicant, for the, um, property owner to reach navigable waters, and it's consistent with the length of the neighboring docks. This is the site plan that he intends to use. Um, he is also meeting the side setback or exceeding the side setback required by the city, which is ten feet from the extension of the side property lines. Land use regulations, chapter three-point-three-point-three-point-one, does state the general standards for docks requiring a special use permit. Some of these are related to those that cross public right-of-way, as this one does not. They're not all applicable. The first one is not applicable. It's not attached to any seawall. Setbacks specified by DEP are complied with. It's designed to meet or exceed the setbacks. Property owners sign a grant of easement, not necessary here. The dock peer or appurtenance will be compatible and appropriate with adjacent properties or other properties within the district. You could see from the prior, uh, graphic that it is, uh, similar in design and length. And that, um, our code is a little behind the times. It does require that the dock be, uh, approved by DEP prior to issuance of a building permit, but we may not do that. Florida statutes do not permit, um, lower jurisdictions to hold up a permit for the lack of a higher permit. We can, however, require it at the time or prior to commencement of a construction, which is our standard. In this case, Mr. Green, um, did provide the self-certification necessary, so we do have that on record. There's further criteria that's applicable to docks that is, um, related to standard special use permits, but not all of the criteria. A few of them, utilities in regard to location availability, adequacy and compatibility with surrounding properties. Any addition of electricity, water, or any other service provided by the city will be required to be permitted, um, by Public Works because they will have to cross and use the right-of-way in order to access, uh, for construction. Screening, buffering, or separation of any nuisance or hazardous feature, there's no nuisance or hazardous features that will require buffering from the neighbors. This is a standard dock. It's long enough. The side setbacks are adequate. Let's see. The, um, proposed signs or exterior lighting, uh, this is not going to be a nuisance. Lighting is required, and there is a stipulation for this, to be minimal and not to be used at night and to have either a manual or automatic shut-off, so it's not to be a nuisance and still provide the safe lighting necessary for navigation at night. Effect upon the value of surrounding properties, the use shall not hinder the development of nearby vacant properties or adversely affect their economic value. The dock will indeed enhance the values of surrounding property by being a maintained, um, nice-looking, functioning dock as opposed to the old dock that's existing now. Staff feels that the applicant has met all of the requirements for a special use permit and is recommending approval of SU twenty-one-eleven-oh-eight with three stipulations. And these are standard that we do require for special, most special use docks. One, the dock must be kept in good working order and condition to not degrade the value of nearby properties. Two, that lighting must be limited to minimal lighting required to use the dock safely at night. Lighting must be switched on either automatically or manually so that there will be no lights on continuously. Three, all other applicable state or federal permits must be obtained before commencement of the development. Any conditions associated with required FDAP permit will be met at the time of construction. Planning Commission did meet on April twenty-first and reviewed, um, the application and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of SU twenty-one-eleven-oh-eight with the same stipulations as recommended by staff. I am available for any questions. I have not seen Mr. Green here today. I don't know if he was detained or not available.
Any questions? Mr. Roth?
Yeah, just one. So it says, "Proposed dock rebuild." Is it going in the exact same location as the derelict dock?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Schwartz, I'm very familiar with this property. It's not too far away from where I currently reside or where I resided for almost twenty years before that. And as a child, um, this property was known by everybody because it belonged to Ms. Stewart's and she was the bird lady. If you had an injured bird, you took them to Ms. Stewart and she fixed them. She healed them. But that dock's been there forever. There's, that, that dock has been there forever. And with regards to the eighty-foot, I seem to remember many years ago, there was concerns about individuals that would be rowing, like physically rowing and having to go around docks, so there was like an eighty-foot thing that was set up.
That's very interesting. Thank you. You solved a mystery.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And I do apologize. There's one more thing that I would like to mention that I did add here. There is no boat lift associated with the dock at this time. Should the owner, uh, decide to come back at a later time with a boat lift, which he's likely to do, it's not going to exceed the twenty percent threshold to require a special use expansion, so he could just come forward with a building permit for that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we need to open the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a vote, a, a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby.
At this time, I would like to make the motion to approve SU dot-two-one-dot-one-one-zero-eight to incorporate the stipulations as recommended by staff.
Check.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, next under new business, department head, city attorney or council. We have the regatta discussion. Brought that forward because it's time of the year that we need to talk about, uh, our regatta. Obviously, this year it was canceled. I think we're in the seventh year going forward. And they've scheduled, I wanna schedule it for February twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Obviously, wanna bring it up and get it moving forward. Obviously, want to bring it up and get it moving forward. Hear anything from the council members? It's a great event, obviously, for our city. It brings a lot of attention to our city. It brings, fills up the hotels, the businesses. You know, even though it's only for a day, the event, it actually brings a lot to our community. And we've got a lot of community people in the audience that, that support it, as well as brings, I want to say national attention to us, but actually the regional attention. Now, the, what I've heard is the new TV stations are more interested this year, coming out of COVID. It's going to be a huge event for us. So, any questions, concerns, motion to move forward, you know?
Is, is anyone else going to do any kind of, are we going to hear from the public at all?
We can, if anybody wants to get up and say how important it is. I mean, that was more of a, "You gotta regatta," the audience. I know we've got several of the volunteer groups here in the audience, so there is no present, specific presentation, but if you had questions, specific questions, because again, it's basically just moving forward. The TDC has it in their pass-through budget for two years. So, you know, again, we've, we've realized through our Public Works, our police, obviously it's a fine-tuning the cost of it for our staff. Obviously, I've been a supporter as a council member for all the years, and, and what it does to bring, you know, and fifty to a hundred thousand people, depending on numbers downtown, and we talk about economic impact, you know, it's, it's there. And we, we actually, you know, helps the Boy Scouts, helps the, the clubs that park cars. I mean, just a great event, and I think coming out of COVID, it's going to be very important to continue forward. And if we go forward another year and then decide that it's something we want to change, we do it next year. But, you know, yes, ma'am, Jane.
I've, I've been a couple of times, and, you know, the thing I like about it the most is there's something for everybody there. And maybe you're not into the boat racing, but I usually go for the music, and I've really enjoyed that. And it's, it's just such a great community builder, and really, I think, is a great way to show, show us off. I mean, our Riverwalk Park, we invested a lot into it, and I, I love that we use it and that it's open to the public. So, I'm definitely supportive.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had some individuals speak with me about the regatta. One of the, if, if, if this is, if this is the worst complaint somebody had, this is fixable. This is so easy to fix. The complaint was that they weren't able to be able to purchase an adult beverage on the Bradenton side, that they either had to walk over to the Palmetto side, or they had to physically visit someplace else. So, I, and, and I said, "Well, I, that doesn't seem to make sense to me. I don't," and I wasn't here. So, if, if that's something that the city put in as, as a, a concern, or something to be aware of, I'd like to have a discussion on that, because it seems to me that you, if you want people to come and to participate, and to fully participate, some people do enjoy a beer now and then, and why is it on only one side, or so, I, I just, I need some input on that, because it didn't make sense to me.
There's an opportunity, which, which we've been talking through with the regatta people in the DeSoto, that there is an area that is a fenced-in area in Palmetto. For whatever reason, I don't remember, as a councilman, maybe Mr. Roth remembers more, but I don't, it was just not done in Bradenton. I believe that there's an opportunity in an area in the Bradenton side to still have it where it's a family-friendly event, but you can have a beer garden inside an area that will be far enough away from downtown, so if people want to go downtown to get something, they're still there, but it won't affect, because even though we know sometimes there's no open containers, people have coolers and different things, but that's something that the regatta is working through to make that available in a family-friendly, safe way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth.
Yeah. As I say, Councilman Barnaby, we've come a long way. I remember back in the days when we were approving, approving Main Street.
What part of woman did you miss? Just asking.
And, sorry, and, you know, we were, as, as every, the only thing that was coming forward were bars, and Reverend Gold and, and yourself, but it was, there was an anti-alcohol caucus that you seemed to belong to, so now we're concerned about. And, 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 and that's fine, because at the time, it was, it was, it was shocking. I wish there were more non-bars coming in, but that's all, that's, at the very beginning, that's all that was applicating. That's all that was asking us, and we're getting, we've come a long way, but, and, and we've come a long way. But the, the first regatta, it was sold as a family-friendly event, and, and it was, it was specified that there was going to be no alcohol, you know, period. I think that, that over the time, it got to where it went over to Palmetto. I don't have a problem with, with anything modifying or changing, you know, as this is moving forward. That's just, it was just at the very first time, it was presented as this is a, you know, a, a pure family event.
Well, and as you know, when, when I was doing Winter Wonderland, it was a family-friendly event, and it was probably the only event in downtown that the sponsoring organization did not have a beer wagon or something of that nature. Again, if it is done correctly, and done in a way that if people want to participate that way, I don't understand why it's, I mean, why are they spending money in the city of Palmetto? Not picking on anybody, not picking on Palmetto.
The goal is to make this, obviously, a community event. Manatee County is on board. Hopefully, we're going to do it, and then Palmetto, it comes to them next Monday, I believe, to approve. And obviously, it's a, it's a long process, which it works great, and we've got the great in our staff, great community support, and, you know, I think it's an event that, obviously, coming out of COVID is going to be huge, and we've been a leader. Our state's been a leader in doing things. Our, you know, we had the first parade, I believe, in the country, you know, not only the state of Florida that we, we did, and it came off with, without a glitch, and worked perfectly, and we want to keep this going forward, so. Questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders.
Do, do we have a regatta board? You keep pointing out to the crowd that this, is there a regatta board?
Regatta people.
What, I, I don't understand. Can I, can I have that? What do you mean, regatta people?
Well, people that support it, and a promoter through the group, so if you have questions.
Oh, we have a promoter here?
Yeah, you have questions, Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, well, then ask him.
Well, I'd like to know who they are. I mean, I don't.
Right, well, this is the city going forward, so, but if there's questions, do you have a specific question?
If there's a promoter in, in the audience?
Okay, yes, sir.
Could you please come forward?
State your names.
Mike Fetschko, ISM USA, and we've had the privilege, seven years, of doing the Bradenton Area River Regatta. In the audience is Manatee County, Elliot Felcione, who really brought the idea. We were doing the Pittsburgh Regatta, and he brought this, and hatched this, and then brought me down here. I'm a full-time resident, except I go home four months to see my ninety-seven-year-young mother, and she raised eleven of us, and she tells me to get back in the summer to cut my grass. The Pittsburgh Pirates are here. Caleb Grimes and Hugh Miller, DeSoto, you guys are all here. You guys run the engine to make sure we, we do it right on a food and beverage and, and support the local charities, so.
We have Mike Carter, Main Street Downtown people.
Beautiful.
Yep. And others that wanted to come, but obviously.
Yeah, Lecom couldn't be here. Manatee Memorial Hospital, I didn't, you know, they couldn't be here. Faircans could not be here, but they are partners of the event. You bet. Question?
Questions. So you're proposing a new contract to promote the 2022 race? We do, we now exist, and you have a contract right now, because?
We have a, we have an MOU. I know we have that, so I guess it's a contract.
So we'd have to revisit that MOU or contract?
Sure. It's worked every year.
Right, so at some point, let me, let me say this. I'm a hundred percent in favor of regatta. I've organized regattas numerous times, and.
We're going to put you in a boat, then.
No, I didn't say, I said organize, I didn't say race.
We're looking for drivers.
Well, I probably could, but I'm, no, I'm not going to.
You've just got to turn at one point, or you're one of the.
Yeah, left turns only.
Gulf of Mexico.
Yeah. Like I say, I'm in favor of this one hundred percent. I, I do have a lot of questions, I think, for another time period of you or whoever organizes this 2022 event. We started out, I went back and looked at some notes in 2014, I think our first race was in 2015, so we had, is that not true? It says, these are the minutes of 2014 for the first race to be in 2015?
I don't have my notes in front of me.
Okay. Anyway, that, that doesn't matter. There was only one rainout, I think, in that time period. The second year, that was a rainout.
Yep.
And, I mean, I, to me, I'd like to see a little bit bigger boats. There is another class above what you've presented that would be more exciting to the fans. They're louder. You might be able to hear them at Punta Gorda. So that, that's the thrill of, of boat racing, is, is, you know, not only just the visibility of it, but the, the excitement of, and they're a little faster, and they probably charge a little bit more, but we're, we're, the boat racing sanctioning is not that expensive, fortunately, because they're wanting to, you know, some, some of the boat racing across the country is now having a hard time, because nobody wants to sponsor one.
We, we could look into that, and we have in the past, the cigarette.
No, 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 not cigarette. That's, that's too big.
It's too big.
Yeah, 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 well, that's straight, straight.
Yeah, the F, the F-two series we have right now goes through a pretty stringent process in permitting, which, you know, Caleb Grimes and his firm do, but we could look into that. I mean, it's, I don't think Coast Guard's here, are they? No. But we have a lot of, from River Rescue to Coast Guard, exactly what kind of vessels we can put in the Manatee River. And we do it first and foremost for safety, safety of the drivers, safety of the public. We have raced bigger boats in bigger water jurisdictions. These boats, these boats work, right? I, I wish they could be louder. We can make them louder, but I don't know if we can get them bigger. I'm just going to be very honest with you, because of the permitting process.
Caleb, it's very complex, right?
And it takes about six, eight months to get done. And, and Mayor, you know we're here today because there are other, there are other geographic areas in Florida that would like to see this race, right? But I'm committed to Bradenton. I fell in love with Bradenton when I came here. I bought a home here, and we want to be here, but we need this, we need the thumbs up on this today respectfully. We can answer any questions, get together for lunch, talk about the regatta. We're going to put beer in here with DeSoto, with Hugh Miller.
All I'm saying is that's.
No problem. I'm just, I'm just telling you how long it takes, and coming out of a, a year of COVID takes even more work. The great news is, this Powerboat Super League, and I know, Bill, you're familiar with the APBA, they love this water. They love Bradenton and Palmetto. They love to stay here. They stay at the Marriott. We're going to do more things, I think, for Main Street. We'd like to put the boats down there Friday, let everybody get up, you know, close and personal and see them, meet the drivers, that sort of thing. Maybe have some boats over at Pier 22 as well. But this takes a lot of effort, and I'm just being very candid with you. The MOU works that we have. We hope it comes back. If we get delayed and bogged down, you're going to have, it's going to be, you know, you're going to have to find somebody else.
Well, I think there's an opportunity, though, Mike, to, to work through some things that might have been questions in the past, which I'm willing to do, and when, make it easier. We have worked through a lot of the kinks over the years with the transportation between the two cities, different things, and it's not just a boat race. It's a lot more. It's a children's fishing tournament. It's a, a bunch of different things, and sometimes a race. It's, you know, so it brings in the whole part of the community, and, you know, like I said, sometimes there's questions about the numbers and different things, but you're still talking about tens of thousands of people coming downtown that make a huge difference, and brings more to our town day after day, not just that one day. And actually, a city, you know, coming out of COVID, and, and when you talk about, there's others that want us, once you lose something, and sometimes things run their course over the years, but once you lose something to a billionaire that wants to take this away from us, we want to keep it. We want to be that big, little city that still continues to grow and, and have activities for our family-friendly whole community, and that's important to all of us.
I love it. I love to see it succeed. That's why I do it now, right? I do a lot of other things. Some people know in the back there what I really do. I do this one because I can do it with a great staff, with a great civic support of both all of your people, city services, Public Works. Palmetto, their, their, their folks are terrific on that front as well. You know, it's a one-day event, but it takes a ton to get it done, and we're ready, so.
Mr. Roth?
I just wanted to offer an opposite view of my fellow councilmen. I think the boats are plenty loud enough. You know, I live, I live at least a mile away from a race site with downtown buildings in between, and they're extremely audible.
It, it all depends on your hearing. I agree with you, Patrick. I wear earplugs on the Green Bridge, so, and it's like, but I'm going to get you a special boat, Bill, and we're going to put you in it, make it really loud.
Yes, I've got a jet boat, but I'd like to see, and a lot more conversation on this. The regatta, yes. The organization, and I think we need to have a local, and I think you even had that in Pittsburgh, where you had a local committee that has input to the, the organization of the event.
Yeah, Pittsburgh.
Well, they, they're doing it on their own now, right?
They're doing it on their own. They've fallen on hard times. I left the, running the Pittsburgh Regatta when I came here, and not because I came here, have they failed. They failed on a lot of different fronts, but, and we have to be cautious about, about beer. I mean, beer, beer gardens is the way to go, and we'll do it well. Pittsburgh became beer everywhere when we came in and took it over, and we created the environments of gardens. But listen, I'm, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to kick the tires and light the fires and make this thing happen, but we got to go. We got to get moving, so.
So today, we want a motion to move forward. And, Mr. Rudisso, what do we need? Just a motion to go forward with the regatta, as in the pastors, or?
Well, I assume at some point, we're going to see the MOU. There will be a document, but at this point, I'm not, I think that's what they're looking for, it sounds like.
I, I believe at this point, we're, we should have a motion to have a regatta. At some point soon after that, we need to know who we're going to use as a promoter and as a, whether it be a regatta committee locally or whatever, so that's, that's my motion.
Second. Is that right?
Okay, so let me make sure that I'm clear, and I understand. You are supporting the regatta, and you would like to see, prior to this year's regatta, that we have a committee put together, is that?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I don't know how we tell these people how to do their business. I have not, I, I will say, I have not seen the memo of understanding. That would be important to have, and in concept, I am for supporting the regatta and allowing them to go forward, but I think that we need to very quickly have the memo of understanding distributed to us.
Let me, let me correct my second. So my second is for a regatta. I think that the memorandum of understanding will come second, and so you should, you two, you two should get together and talk.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, Bill.
And that's right.
Can you work out your issues?
Yes, I can, yeah, because I, I'm just, I've had some conversations with people in the community, and they'd like to have more involvement and more say in what's goes on in our downtown, and they feel they've been locked out, so I want to make sure they're not.
Well, but I think now, are we behind the curve if we start questioning things for the next three to six months, and then it can't happen?
Well, just like, excuse me, just like Council, Councilwoman Barnaby brought up about the beer, that it was stated, race number one, there will be no beer. It was family-friendly. Now, now we're modifying it. That's fine. If there's another modification, I, I think we can work through all this stuff. I mean, you know, the first few events, you know, I had an issue with the cost, I had the issue the way it was presented to the council, but we're now down the road, you know, to where, you know, I was glad to see the parade take off, you know. I think that, you know, we all want to come out of COVID. I'm not, I'm not a regatta expert. I know that Councilman Sanders has done this in Iowa, a pretty big event, correct? So maybe you have some ideas that there, at a time of a memorandum. Uh, I'm not, I'm not a regatta expert. Uh, I know that, uh, Councilman Sanders has done this in Iowa, a pretty big event, correct?
Correct.
So, um, maybe you have some ideas that there, at a time of a memorandum of understanding, we can iron some of the stuff out of here. I personally am okay with moving forward on this, the way we did with the parade. Uh, details were later, uh, put in that, that, uh, you know, I, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'd just like to keep moving forward.
I think it's important to move it forward.
Well, I, and I think that, that it's fair to.
If we want to work through, I don't know how we work through a city committee. Obviously, the mayor's office appoints committees in this city. So, you know, is that Scott, Carl, is there any direction to move forward with that? And set up something where we can move this forward as possible to make the event happen without delays or, Mike, you know, I mean, bring up.
I mean, yeah, I'm sorry. Apologize. It, I, I think maybe, I've only heard one council person that has suggested a committee, and it might be good to start with that to see kind of what the consensus is, if that's something that the city wants to look at, but we also have to remember, it's not just a city event. So.
Yeah, I have no, I gotta tell you, Palmetto doesn't have a committee, right? The county, who's already approved this in the TDC, doesn't have a committee. Am I open to a committee? Not if it takes months. I don't have time. I'm a private entrepreneur. Frankly, we've done this seven times, and we've hit probably six home runs and one double with the rainout. We take, we take all this very seriously. Bill, if you want to sit down and, and have a conversation with what we do from A to Z, that's great. I also respectfully, Mr. Mayor, know that we have an MOU that works. It works for the county. It's worked seven years. I don't have time for some negotiation on an MOU. I'm just being candid with you all. You know, Gene knows I've been saying for two months, we gotta get this going. If this is gonna get bogged down, I'm not your guy. And you can, Bill, you can call up somebody and bring them in here, but we have the partners, strong ones in place. Many of them are here. We've done it seven years diligently, safely, correctly. You want to sit down and have a conversation about the beer? We got it. You got a conversation, you want the Beatles? We can't do it. You, you want, you want country music over here and rock and roll in Palmetto? Take it up with Palmetto. They want country. We know what we do. We do it very well, and permitting, permitting, you know, Caleb, the clock's ticking, right? It's.
It's Ms. Coachman had a.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for getting this going or coming to us so we can get this going. With the understanding you've done the seven years.
Yeah.
And there are an array of entities that are all involved. Obviously, you have been working together before. Can you just quickly explain to us how you have been working together, you know, um, to get this going? I mean, do you have meetings?
Yeah, I have, I have a pretty core team of good advisors, and Bill, you can meet with us. It's Caleb Grimes, it's Hugh Miller, it's Elliot Felcioni, it's Jeff Pedomic, it's Craig at the Pirates and the Marauders. It's Lee Combs, um, lead Florida, uh, person, Jim Schaffner. There's many others. We, we sit down and we fix what didn't work the year before. Uh, also involved in that is, is the Power Boat, uh, folks, Bill, from the Power Boat Super League. They sit down and they talk about what works. We had the Jersey Skip boats in two years ago. A lot of people said, you can't hear them. Well, I said, but they're really fast, but anyway, but that's as an example how we, we're not bringing them back. Uh, audio's a big thing for us. We have great partners. They're, all our vendors are local. We sit and we work on sound. We work on the logistics, the operations, uh, to perfect them each and every year. When the attendance is announced, it's by the task force, which makes up Manatee County, City of Palmetto, City of Bradenton. They, with looking at Manatee County traffic and so on, and they come up with the, the, um, final figures. We see three distinct waves of attendance. One in the mornings. Mayor highlighted that we're gonna really enlarge a kids' fishing tournament this year. Second audience comes, Bill, pretty much to see the boats start. They can't get in the water because we're only allowed four hours in the water here. And we have helicopters and, and Manatee, uh, Manatee, uh, uh, trying to think of the name, uh, safeguards, their committee, the protection of the manatees, they run our whole surveillance. We see a manatee, we shut down, right? No one knows why the race is stopped while the engines go silent, Pat, but that's why. Coast Guard's involved in meetings all the time. You know, we want to, we want to bring the boats in from this area. No, we're gonna bring them in from the boat ramp in Palmetto. It makes most sense, and there's, there's hurdles there. And the last crowd comes late in the day to see the finals, roughly about four o'clock. And then they stay for the fireworks, and we put on, you know, a pretty good fireworks show with Zimbeli. I'm sixty-five now. When I, when I started this with Elliot, I was fifty-five. It took two years to get off the ground. Not that my age plays, but I know this works. I know the MOU works. We want to negotiate the MOU? I'm not the guy. Uh, it's, it's good. Take a look at it. If there's something, a problem with it, let me know what it is, but it goes from the county to the city. It's the county's money that come through the MOU to you. It's audited by them. You know, so, and then we have the whole risk of the event, sponsorships, insurance, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, Mrs. Coachman still.
Um, my, my question was not, um, to question
How we do it.
how well you do it.
I dream about it.
I just wanted, and, and that was a perfect demonstration that you know what you're doing. And you're doing it, and you have been doing it. I just wanted it to be said, and I know you probably feel like you've said it a hundred times, but I'm for it. I'm, I'm, I'm for it, and the MOU that has worked. I mean, of course, I just want to see it. Uh, I want to read it. But all for it, and I only ask you that question not to say we need to be a part of it, but just for you to explain to everyone here and those that will view this, that you know what you're doing. You've done it, and you have a ton of people, and you've, you've found the way to collaborate.
We have, and they've turned into friendships and partnerships and.
And very much supporters of the city. I want to let, um, Mr. Elliot Felcioni come up and talk.
But I, I thought I'd just clarify some things. Elliot Felcioni, Director of Tourism, uh, for Manatee County. Thank you all for your time. You go back seven years when sister cities were formed, Pittsburgh and Bradenton, and that's when Luke Ravenstall was mayor. And the first idea was, uh, that regatta that I saw in Pittsburgh, uh, as I grew up. Called my friends at the Pittsburgh Pirates, my former employer, and I says, can you get us in front of the people that produced the regatta? And they put us in front of Mike Fetschko, because we knew the track record that they had. Uh, the, the event did die in Pittsburgh because the, uh, the beer and the, and the wine and the alcohol got out of control. Uh, so when they shifted gears, they brought Mike in and his partner. Uh, they went dry for a while, and it flourished. The idea of the regatta as a tourism director is, where is our future? The urban core and the east county evolution. The islands are built out. Third-party research that also is hired to, to, um, uh, study the event from interceptors, surveys of, of the attendees, economic impact, tells us that first timers to the Bradenton area return ninety-four percent of the time within twelve months. So if we can get people from Tampa, St. Petersburg, Lakewood Ranch and Parish to come down to downtown Bradenton and Palmetto and expose them to what is here, guess what? They'll come back. That was the idea. And eight million dollars are shifted, not particularly from outside the county, but shifted to the urban core during that one-day event, okay? Where I was really excited was the tourist development council and the Board of County Commissioners have supported it with the mindset, Manatee County is not going to push an event on the cities. It's y'all's decision, but we, we stand ready to support it if you want to do it. Uh, that, it goes to the TDC in June. Uh, it, it's part of our two-year budget that gets approved by the Board of County Commissioners in September, and we're ready to roll. Now, uh, if you all move forward, the, the City of Palmetto moves forward, we have an agreement between the City of Bradenton and Manatee County. So basically, through your, the memorandum of understanding, uh, ISM USA invoices Bradenton. Bradenton sends us an invoice to reimburse back the City of Bradenton. It has worked flawlessly. Your committee is basically these people in this audience, some of the best leaders that we'll see in the, in the urban core. But I challenge Mike every year. Hugh Miller challenges Mike. Lynn Horn challenges Mike. We want change every year, something new, something different, and he's performed. And we evaluate because we talk to people. I thought he's done a great job with his partner. It always can get better, and it will, but there's an opportunity that's presented in a great time of the year to continue to drive people to the urban core to feed your retail for the greater good. That's why, that's why we're bringing it to you today. Thank you so much. I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Caleb, did you have?
Yeah, Caleb, Caleb does all of our permitting, uh, Grimes and Go-Ann. Caleb Grimes.
Mayor, hi. Caleb Grimes. Yeah, I just wanted to, and it's partly in answer to, to your, your question, Councilman. We will start on the permitting basically now, and we get really heavy into it the first of the summer. And we permit this through many, many agencies. Mike mentioned Coast Guard, FDEP, uh, and the, the list goes on and on and on. And so we have to have, to do this permit, we have to have all the details of the event. We, uh, have to know who's putting it on, what the team is, who's gonna be doing the, uh, manatee, uh, safety viewing, what's the helicopter, what's its timeframe on it? And we have to get that in with our application, uh, at least six to seven months ahead of time. It just takes that long to get through the process. And so, uh, in order to have this event happen, as Mike has explained, just from a permitting standpoint, we need to know who it is and what the details are. Now, I will say, because we've been doing it for many years, we have an easier job doing it than we used to because they're familiar with it. They've seen the route. They've seen the setup. They've seen the reports that we've given afterwards and the great success of it. So we don't have particularly substantive problems getting through it, but we still have to have all that information upfront and go through the, through the process. And so it is very important that, from a permitting standpoint, we know that it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and who's gonna be putting it on with the details of it. And so that, that is something that, uh, I'm, I'm glad we're here today. I'm glad Elliot, uh, spoke, and hopefully we can, uh, get moving on it. And, and also, if you have any questions on the permitting side, I can do it. You know, our firm has been glad to be one of the, uh, supporters and sponsors of the regatta. It, it's, uh, we're downtown, you know, we, we just love seeing it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
With the understanding that, that, uh, the motion is to support the regatta as well as asking them to get the memo of understanding to us. So I would just.
Right, so we have to get it going, but with the MOU, we know what it works. If there's specific questions that I believe Mr. Sanders can bring forward to ask, but I think we need to have a motion that's going through.
Yeah, at point of order, I'm not, I'm not sure if we have a motion a second because I, 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 Mr. Sanders's motion had a two parts, and I, I was kind of for the one part. I'm not sure where, where he is. I, I personally would, I, I, look, I, I don't, I, I had issues with the regatta at the beginning and how it was done. That's well-known. But that, I'm, that's all old news. We're moving forward. We're, we're now changing this and that. I don't know what Mr. San, Ms.
So you pulled your second to clarify what his motion is.
I thought, I thought, I don't know that that was, I don't know that I can just pull part of a motion and, and have it, and, and what I, I do want, if, look, Mr. Sanders has more, uh, experience than I think, well, with, with corporate contracts and stuff like that, that I, I trust him. I, I'm not sure what his issues are with this. But, uh, I think that, I know that he, I know he's a sports fan. I know he likes motorcycles and boats. I, I think he's in favor of this. I'm not sure what his issues are, and I, I think that maybe something could be worked out. I, I don't know what, what, I don't know what this is, so I would like to ma, I would like for him to feel comfortable going forward. Um, so I'm, I'm ready to.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if that's the case, I see Ms. Beauchamp.
I'm sorry.
Justice Clerk, I'd like to get some clarity on the motion. We had some confusion there, and if we could restate the motion, that'd be very helpful.
Or if, if, Mr. Roth, if you're withdrawing your second and the motion doesn't have a second, I'll make another motion. I, I, I'm just trying to clean it up.
You made a motion.
Yes.
Right, but, but Mr. Roth said that.
Yeah, I think you're making this more difficult than what it should be. I just said simply, I'm in favor of the regatta. I make a motion. We have the regatta with a local committee, whether it be part of the, council or someone made up of it, uh, to, to move forward.
Which we have a local committee going forward, and I don't.
Well, that's the reason I brought them up here. They're not really a local committee that's assigned by the city.
But, but the city is not the sponsor of this, and we know.
Oh, yes, we are.
We give, we give money towards it, but we are not the major sponsor of this.
Yes, we are.
The only sponsor, and to create more committees bogs things down, in my opinion, and going forward. If there's specific questions,
No.
we want to answer them.
But in, in the.
There is not specific questions. So did, there, Mr. Roth, did you withdraw the second in the way that motion is?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm trying to get towards a consensus of, uh, you know, I, I.
I think we can get the consensus and answer questions if they're legitimate questions that come forward with situations that would happen. For seven years, we've been working through things, and it has gotten better. I agree with you. At the beginning, there was some concerns.
Right.
But we took a leap of faith, and you did as well at the beginning, to say, let's see how it moves forward. And after two years, it's not moving better, we would pull it. If I'm, I'm not trying to pull it yet, but that's what I remember.
I, I, I understand completely, so I'm just, I'm just trying to be, uh, the peacemaker here.
Can I say something that I was cut off before?
Let him finish, please.
Well, I never finished before.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm interested, I mean, the, if Mr. Sanders is the one that's interested, I, I'm, I'm okay with him being the, uh, concerned citizen of the council to, to talk to the people. He, the committee can be that. I, I don't think, I don't think he's, I think he's trying to have a race. I'm not sure what.
Right, so then let's move forward, and if there's questions, get them out, but don't try to, you know, let's try to work through it, not just shut it down.
Let me explain something. I've done this numerous times, and I put them together in six months. I was a little younger then, a lot younger. I'm sixty-seven now. I was thirty-two when I did, like, the first one. So I know, I know the, 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 how hard it is to get permits and get everybody on board. It, it's, it's a, you spend a lot of time. But after you've done the first one, the second one, then the third one, it becomes a lot easier because it's like we're doing the same thing as last year. But it, that, but I want to bring up, I just want the council to understand, I went back to the minutes before I was here in twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen, and there was a concern that the, the money that the city would expend was too much. And we get two hundred thousand dollars from, um, tourism. It's handed over to the promoter. It passes through us, a hundred thousand in two, two increments. But there was concern that we would have a cost with this, with police, fire, public utilities. And the council said, we do not want to do that. And we were promised, I can read you the language if you like. I pulled it out from, uh, the minutes. And it said, as long as we don't have to, uh, use our forces, we're in favor of it. Well, now, over time, we have used our forces to over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, as a promoter myself, I've always had to pay those expenditures. Uh, police, fire, public works, those are expensive. Uh, we have people down there that's committed to that, and, uh, so I know black, last year, we had a real problem with, uh, docking the boats over at the Wares Creek, and it, it was, uh, it was hard. It was hard to have that race. And we did that at the last minute, and Public Works was over there, you know, setting up, and so I thought we put too much pressure on our, uh, city employees to actually do the, the work of the work for the event. the work of the work for the event. And we didn't have local input. I went over there to see what it was, and the police ran me off. I thought, what? I had, I've had people come up and say, I want to participate, and they've been blocked. So those are the things, the things that I want to make sure that our city is getting full bang for its buck, and that the local people do not have any complaints with, with how it's organized, and I'm ready to start and have a regatta. In fact, I would, I would enhance it more than what it is, quite frankly. I would, I'd make it more than one day. So with that said, I'd like to, I have a motion that we have the regatta, that we either have a committee or someone assigned. And, and, and I want to, I want to say this, the MOUs, I, I, I does not like MOUs, and our attorney knows that. They're not enforceable, they're not like a contract, they don't have contract language that, that you can say, you didn't perform, and you didn't perform, and what's the consequences of non-performance? It's not in there. So I have a problem with that. And we had some problem with insurance. We were not covered. And when you got boats that's going 80 miles an hour underwater, it might get into the crowds, that's not, we had a problem from our standpoint of even having the event insured. Now, the APBA obviously insures the sanctioning of that, and I think they have like a $5 million policy. And the promoter is to give us a million-dollar policy, and we didn't have it on file last year. So my motion's pretty clear that we need more input into the organization of the event.
And again, that's where, you know, this is a different regime of mayor now, which I've offered a lot of things to you over the four years, I mean, the four months, to be involved in things, and I think that's seen through this council, through all of us. Some of the figures that you're talking about were years ago, that have been streamlined through our Public Works and our police, which is in their budgets coming forward. They were prepared if this came forward. The boat situation was a last-minute thing with Palmetto's boat ramp that was straightened out. I believe that was two years ago, though, and it was fixed last...
Well, they didn't have one last year, right?
Well, no, I'm saying, though, the year that, the last one we had...
Last one we had.
They docked at Palmetto, didn't they?
No.
Yeah, yeah, it was the, it was two boat races ago that we had the problem on, and then last time...
We didn't have one last year.
No, I'm saying, though, so three years ago was the issue.
It was two, two years ago.
Right, but the last regatta we had, Mike, didn't we have, didn't they dock at Palmetto?
2020 regatta was Palmetto.
Right.
2020, we did not have a regatta.
2020, we had a regatta. 2021, we did not have a regatta.
2020, last year.
Okay, so 20, all right, you're right.
And you got the certificate, and it was filed by one of your employees that works through the city. I, I can sit here and, Bill, I can talk to you, to the council, but you all have to decide, if you want this regatta, if you want this MOU, if you want Bill to chat with, with us who get together and, and work on the regatta, great. City of Pittsburgh does not have a committee made up by the city of Pittsburgh for the regatta. The regatta has a 501(c)(3) in Pittsburgh.
Right.
That's made up of corporate citizens. City's not on it.
Which we don't have.
That's fine.
You hear a little angst in my voice because it's like, I thought, my wife said, where are you going today? I said, I'm going down to Bradenton City Council about the regatta. You're going to get a key to the city this year. I said, no, we're going to do it again, baby. But to sit here and listen to these, these facts and figures, which you're correcting, Mr. Mayor, and I'm trying to correct with you, Bill, in a calm manner, you all have to decide, do you want to do this? Do you want to do it with the MOU that's in place? Do you want Bill and, and the mayor to come to meet with us when we meet and talk about the regatta? We're ready. I still have the enthusiasm to do it, I have great partners who want to do it, I have great supporters who want to do it. You all have to make a decision if you want to do it. Frankly.
Yes, sir. Jane had something.
I was just going to ask, if, if, if there's no second to his motion, I don't know that we've ever figured that out, I, I might be interested in a different motion.
All right, so Jane, no second, lack of a second, so Jane?
No, I didn't hear him pull his second.
Well, I, I, I'm a little confused as to whether, I, I was actually going to make a motion to, to where I got us here.
Well, you can't make a motion unless it's...
Did you pull your second?
You pulled your second.
I, I did, I did pull a second.
He didn't pull a second.
Okay, so he did pull a second, and there's been no other second given.
And I was going to make an amendment motion.
Okay.
And I want to add one other thing. We do make, we have in the last two or three regattas, Bill, we write a check for $10,000 to the city of Bradenton for police and public work support. We also spend almost that same amount of money in feeding every Public Works, Public Safety, Coast Guard, Army Corps, everybody that's on site that is helping to make this happen.
That's good, I didn't know that. Carl, is, is that, you haven't shown me that, so.
So Jane, you had a...
Tomorrow doesn't get a free meal. He's...
Yeah, he gets a lot of free meals.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we support going forward with the regatta as we have for seven years now, and we, and to get us an MOU in line with what we've done in the past as soon as possible.
Second.
So if, if motion and a second discussion, Mr. Roth?
Well, I would like to include in that, since we're, since we're moving forward, this had, this did have a rocky past. Obviously, those, those rocks are still around there. I was going to include the, the offer was made for Councilman Sanders and yourself to be included in all the, the work to make sure that the MOU that comes back, to me, is going to be something that's acceptable. Yeah, we've talked about, you know, we've seen all kinds of numbers in the past, I don't want to get into the past, this is now, but, you know, that, that, you know, I don't think there's anything out there that we can't fix. Just like, just like alcohol was banned, now we're, we un-banned it without even having a vote, so...
Well, no, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Barnaby.
I brought forward a concern from several citizens to say that they would like to see something similar to the Beer Garden in Palmetto on the Bradenton side because they felt it was too far to walk. That's the only thing I was bringing forward. I wasn't bringing forward, you know, let's run around and throw alcohol out, number one. Number two, the memo of understanding has already been approved in the past, we just want to see a copy of it. I don't want to renegotiate that thing at all.
But if there's concerns, and as they've done for seven years, we've worked through things, and yes, and, and Mike can say to this and some of the others that I have asked probably a lot of different questions than were asked before my administration now. And, like you said, Mrs. Barnaby, I had those same concerns from people, and, and you and I are probably very similar on our drinking habits that aren't there, you know, so, so that's not something, and I, and I agree with you, Mr. Roth, on some of the things about the bars, we've talked about that over the years downtown, and, but that's what starts a city to start building, so...
That's why I voted for him.
Yep, and that's, that was important. So I agree that we can move forward like the motion states, and there will still be concerns, that I will work with the promoter through the MOU with Mr. Sanders to get questions answered and moving forward, but to go forward as we have done in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And that MOU has always been signed in the month of May. That's critical to us.
But again...
You could vote today and say, hey, let's bring the regatta, but then...
No, but we will vote going forward to work, no, we'll, the motion is to go forward this way, but if there's any questions, we can work through them without changing it that way, is what I understand.
Yeah, if I, if I misstated it, then...
Move forward with the MOU.
Move forward.
The way it is, and seconded by Mrs. Coachman.
Are we good?
So, all right, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote, Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Just to make sure that it's clear that the, because the, the motion doesn't say that the, that, that the mayor and Mr. Sanders are going to be the city's representative to make sure that everything is kosher.
As in the past.
Right, so...
That's what, yes, that's what the motion is, to move forward with the MOU and giving the understanding.
He is the mayor, I mean, he's going to work with them, yeah.
We don't need...
I, I don't think we all need to have our fingers in it.
Then, then, then I vote yes for that.
Ward four?
I don't know where, what's the motion again?
We're going forward.
Moving forward with the...
Well, is the motion just we're going forward, or could, could the clerk read the motion back, please?
I do not have it in.
Okay, Jane, will you kind of state the motion again?
Okay. I notice that we go forward in support of the 2022 regatta as we have in the past.
And with the MOU being the same?
With the MOU being the same.
Okay, so, that's what, and Mrs. Barnaby, your vote was?
My vote was, was yes, and, and Ms. Coachman seconded it. I think both Ms. Coachman and I seconded it at the same time, but she's of record, so... And, and I don't think that that motion precludes the mayor and the representative from Ward four going and meeting with the individuals from the regatta at all.
Yeah.
All right, so Patrick, you had voted yes?
I, I, I did, but so it wasn't, the reason why I was concerned is, it wasn't included in the motion, but it is my understanding that this is, this, this will be part of it, because if it comes back with a memorandum of understanding and, and there was a roadblock, then, then that's bad faith.
Right. I've never given you bad faith.
I know that, sir, I'm just, for the record.
Ward four?
Yes, with those conditions that there's, there's over, I'm not finished.
Well, it's a yes or no vote. Ward five?
Yes.
Ward one?
Yes.
Okay, carried unanimously, thank you. Thank you for all of you being here and, and what you do for our community. Moving on, Robin?
Mrs. Sanders. And Vicki White's going to be joining me for this one as well. Your grants and assistance board met in April and discussed the possibility of requesting an additional $500,000 for, and where that comes from, perhaps reserves, perhaps some other venue, but for additional monies to put towards housing assistance. They discussed various applications of that, whether it be for repairs and maintenance or perhaps down payment assistance, but I think their intent was to help the most people possible. We asked them, did they want that out of, as a budget amendment, out of this year's budget, or were they looking forward to next year and that budget? And I think in Ms. White's memorandum, she clearly outlines why it's probably beneficial to consider that in your next budget rather than trying for a budget amendment, taking that out of reserves for this year. And she can give you more information, there was some additional information regarding ship funding that wasn't available at the time of their meeting, so she can speak to that as well. And so our recommendation basically is that if you are so inclined as to allocate additional funding for affordable housing assistance, that you maybe consider that for the next year's budget and take this back to this now Housing Committee to discuss how those funds would be allocated and what kind of programs they'd want to establish for that. And Ms. White, I don't want to add to that.
Yes, as Robin stated, that this was part of a discussion that we had at our last Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting. We have quite a few people on our housing rehabilitation waiting list. We don't keep a waiting list for down payment assistance because if mortgage, or mortgage approvals don't last forever. I think it's maximum like 60 days. So, and really, I haven't gotten a whole lot of calls for down payment assistance. I get a few here and there. Mostly what I get are calls about, well, my roof is falling down, my bathroom doesn't work, I can't get into my bathroom because I'm disabled, you know, those kinds of things. So what I did is I looked at the kind of money that we have available right now, and actually what we would have available in ship funding next year. Right now, I have about $140,000 in CDBG funding that could be used to assist people. Another 67 in ship funding that is available. Next year, we'll get about $350,000 in ship funding that can be used for assistance, and that's the preliminary estimates from the revenue, Revenue Conference Committee at the state. The positive, the positives to receiving this funding would be that we could start working on projects now rather than waiting for ship funding for 2122 to be dispersed. The program year actually starts July 1st, however, that doesn't mean the money shows up on July 1st. The money has shown up, they have started distributing it as late as like November, December, which is halfway through the program year. The additional funding would close a gap and allow more households to be served. And, you know, depending on how you would want to apply this funding, do you want us to do eligibility determinations, or you just want to say, well, just go ahead and help the people be done with it? And the other thing is, is that receiving funding would free up some funding for ship purchase assistance. Other things to consider, on the other hand, if the funding is made available through a budget amendment to the city's 2021 budget, it's highly unlikely that we would be able to get it completely encumbered, let alone spent by September 30th of this year. As Robin stated, one committee member suggests, just take it from reserves. That's not an appropriate use of the city's reserve funding. The city's reserve funding, you know, is actually emergency funding in case we have revenue shortfalls. Eight of the applicants on my list have not had initial assessments done. Actually, there's a few more because I've received some more applications. We will, we would need to go through the process of procuring somebody to help me with doing those initial assessments. I mean, I'm pretty smart, but I am not a contractor. I mean, I don't know everything. So that's going to take some time, too. And there's also the commitments. The ship funding year ends June 30th, there's going to be the annual reporting for that. H L M P ends June 30th, and we're really working hard to get that done. Still working on the 2125 CDBG consolidated plan, which needs to be done by June 1st because there's a 30-day comment period before you all adopt it. Let's see what, oh, let's see what else we've got going on. There's also the ongoing CDBG activities that need to be monitored, the subrecipients, and CDBGCV activities that need to be monitored. And not only that, but I am running the city's mortgage and utility assistance for homeowners through my office, which means I'm actually handing, handling those applications myself. I'm looking forward to applying for H L M P 2122 funding. If we receive funding, we would get $194,000 from them, $180,000 to use for activities, $14,000 for administration. So far, I mean, the previous years that we've applied for that funding, we scored very highly, so we've been awarded funding. So that's why I've got my fingers crossed on that. There's, there's a lot of things, I mean, it's not like just spread the money, get it spent. There's a lot of things that you've got to do on the way to getting that money out into the community that you need to consider. My, my recommendation would be actually to deny this request at this point, and as Robin said, possibly revisit it in 2122, depending on what the state does with the ship funding. Now, they have put it into the state budget as a recurring revenue item, which means you don't necessarily have to go begging for the money every year. They have re-permanent, permanently reduced the amount of money from what it was before when they do the doc stamp so that they could fund these other two programs. So there's that to consider. I guess just see what happens next year. Did you all have any questions?
Questions? Mrs. Coachman?
I don't know if you remember, early on, I, after being sworn in, I had two citizens to come to us about their home was on a waiting list, and then something changed, some criteria changed, so they were no longer eligible. Could any of this money be used for that, or is it still have stringent...
The one, I'm, we're not really sure, because, you know, that particular person has, not only do they have a mortgage on their property, they have a second mortgage, like a home equity line of credit.
Right, one of them was like that, and then there was another one, but I'm, I'm not even remembering exactly.
I'm not, I don't remember what the other one was right off. I do have one person over on the east side that's applied for demolition and reconstruction of their elderly auntie's house. It's a wood frame construction house. And she has been waiting a few years. And she has been waiting a few years. Now, that house is owned free and clear, so really, it would not be hard to do that project, if only we had the money, and I'm hoping this next year that we do.
Vicki, I just had one question. When you said something about we don't have folks asking for down payment assistance.
We do, it's just, it's, we get like maybe one, and then maybe a month later, I'll get another call.
We don't have a lot asking, then, or many asking.
Yeah.
What is the percent that we would give to them if they ask?
Right now, the maximum amount available through ship and CDBG is $20,000 per household.
So, is there regulations on the, than the cost of the house they would be buying, if it's only 20,000? Cause a lot of, you have to have 20% down, well, I don't think there's many affordable homes in our area that are only $100,000.
Unless you go through FHA, then it's three and a half percent.
Three and a half, so, okay, so that's, so that's a lot. So, are, so are we, and I'm not putting blame on anybody, because we see how the CARES Act couldn't give the money away either, to downpa, or to, uh, assistance in mortgages and things through the county, we know there's millions of dollars that's still available, but, um, so I don't think it's a lack of us trying, but is there other angles we can take, or ways, what ways can we help give the money away if it's there, or give it to, in a better situation? Cause as we've talked a lot, we have a lot of affordable housing in the city of Bradenton and different things we do, but some of it is just the, and maybe, like you mentioned, Ms. Coachman, you hear a story, but then when you get all the facts, it's different, or it's not wrong or right, it's just different than what it is, right? So.
Not as easy.
Right, not as easy, and, and again, I don't know if, what can we, as a body of government, do to help even more, when the, with the funds we have, and, and, you know, what we can do? I mean, and I'm not asking for you to answer all of it, I'm just making a statement that I think there's a lot of things we already do, and how do we make it better or more understandable?
Well, um, actually, the amount of property, the amount of house that you can buy is kinda determined by your income and your credit, you know, it's not like a straightforward thing. And, um, in our ALHAP, we do have a maximum house price, and I think it's like around, I can't remember what it is right off, but I think it's like 368,000. Well, not very many people that apply for down payment assistance are gonna buy that house, or that, that price house. And there are houses in the city that are less than that. The only thing I could recommend, maybe, uh, possibly, is if you think that the assistance provided per household needs to be higher, you could, we could talk about increasing that. That's done by amending the ALHAP. If you wanted to hear it.
This council could do.
Yeah. You could, you would, yeah, if you, if you wanted me, direct me to increase the amount available per household, I could do that, and then it would have to come back before you for a vote.
Any comments on that, or questions, or was there any more information, obviously, wanting to give to us? Yeah, Mr. Roth, I think, I think that first, sorry.
Okay, right, I know, uh, Ms. Coker had a point.
I just couldn't hear when she said how much you're doing per household, a thousand?
20,000.
20,000, up to 20,000?
That's a lot. I, before we, so, I know, Ms. Callahan, let, let me just jump in here first. So I'm just looking at the explanation, uh, requested action to be taken by the Council and recommended motion. Um, the recommend, the request, uh, and the recommended motion is to request for the 500,000 in general revenue to, um, is denied. This kinda leads forward something that I've been thinking about right now, uh, in lieu of the, uh, where we are in this calendar year, and where we are in the budget cycle, and the retirements that we have coming up. My, my thought process is that we need to, with the staff we have, work as quickly as possible to put together a skeleton, uh, budget that will carry us through into where we have a new city administrator, that we need to use the resources we have right now to get going as quickly as possible. And I worry about shifting 500,000 into the general revenue fund right now. Uh, I'm, the, the request and the recommendation is to not do this, and I think it comes in line with where I'm, where I'm going, is that we need to, all, all department heads need to turn in last year's budget with a cost of living increase, and we start from there to get going forward into the budget cycle, cause we have a couple of key people leaving in a very short period of time.
Ms. Barnaby?
I, I was just trying to.
Okay, Ms. Callahan?
Ms. Callahan?
Yeah, I think a, a lot of this depends upon, obviously, going forward next year. I think the one thing that's missing from this, which was, th- this is the first action that's come out of the soon-to-be Housing Committee. I think you want that Housing Committee to set, set a comprehensive plan for the aid and assistance that they think is appropriate for the city, because you, I think you'll see that in the form of the down payment assistance, I think you'll see that in the form of rehabs, I think you'll see that in the form of impact fee relief on housing. I think, so I think you wanna see them come forward with a comprehensive plan, that would be a recommendation to you as to how you spend all these funds. I think going forward into the next budget year is the time to look at this. Also, we just got yesterday and today, on the, uh, state, on the, the recovery, the fiscal recovery, there are some provisions for affordable housing in here. That is, they came out with, this is the interim final report. Which is 150 pages of, of things that we were looking for, about how you can spend the funds, and, and glossing through very quickly, uh, last night, there are some provisions, knowing this was on there, potentially for affordable housing. So I think you look at all the sources that may be available, have the Affordable Housing Committee come up with a comprehensive plan as to how you would think they would want to spend, and then marshal our revenues from CDBG, from ship, from the H L M P, from, if it's, if it's reserves, whatever you want, and, and if it's potentially from, uh, the, the federal funds, as to a way to comprehensively try to deal with it, as opposed to just a comment that says throw $500,000 at it. Cause I think that, I think it should be more, more than that, moving forward.
And I think one of the-
And you have a new planning director in place, to help guide that committee, uh, moving forward, as well as you have a, a representative from council on that committee now.
Right, I think one of the important things you said, Carl, is you looked at it more last night, but we did have a department director meeting yesterday to go over a lot of the information and task the department heads to start looking at some of that in ways that that money can be spent, because as we know, that's money that is going to mortgage some of our children's future in ways, so we've got to try to look at that to do forever-type projects, I believe, and that's just, you know, the council will decide, but to go forward looking. And some of these projects in, in the affordable housing part will be some long-term projects that can help people, you know, and that's gonna be important, but how much do we spend in it, and that's gonna be a decision we'd have to make in the near future.
And also noted that, not necessarily from CDBG, but from the city, we have committed $430,000 to a, to a low-interest loan for, um, HTG to put up the 100 or so units in the downtown area. So we have committed funds in the future towards affordable housing as well.
And we've done it in the past, even the projects have failed, but we've, we've done that in the past.
But this one's moving forward.
I, I, I'm saying, I'm just, I'm backing off that, yes, we have done this now, and we have done that in the past. We have, we, this is a, a, you know, something the council has made a decision, that we will support affordable housing projects, we've signed on many times. Now, if they fail, that's on them, but we've always done the right thing and signed on to back them up.
We've offered them the incentive-
Right.
-to do it, even if it failed, we didn't give it, but, but this one's going forward, so it's a good thing.
Right.
All right, any questions? Yes.
Just, uh, in talking about the, the first-time homebuyer and getting the word out there, um, I have some ideas that maybe we could talk about offline, because I have worked on the county side of it as a Realtor, and I think a lot of times, they don't know about it. It's not your fault, it's, like, we need to educate Realtors, we need to educate the lenders, too, because they deal in such big geographic, that they don't always know the city, if you're in the city, Bradenton, there might be some down payment assistance or whatever. I don't know if these are first-time homebuyers, or what, that you're talking about, but-
Yes, they're first-time homebuyers. Um, we didn't have, we had a little bit of CDBG funding available last year that we used up, this year, we received no ship funding, so we didn't have anything to put out for down payment assistance. The other thing with ship funding is you've also gotta look at your income set-asides and your special needs set-asides, cause you gotta meet all of those, too. And a lot of times, meeting those lower-income groups, it's easier to meet them through repairing homes than trying to get them in a home. Or even through the, the tax credit projects, too, you can meet it that way.
But I could see where, um, when we're talking about trying to help future generations with some of this money that's coming in, that first-time homebuyer assistance could be, I, I've worked with teachers, nurses, those kind of people, and, um, I could see that being helpful to get them in, because it's not gonna be easy to be a homebuyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do want to thank the city's Grants and Community Assistance Board, um, for getting back together and getting, uh, focused on what we, as a community, need to be doing. I am, I, I will support the staff on this, because I think it's, at this point in time, taking a half a million dollars and throwing it somewhere is not going to do what we ultimately want it to do.
I think it would be really hard to even get it encumbered, let alone expended in four months.
Right.
Unless you wanted to do it and carry it over to next year. But really, at that point, you might as well revisit it next year anyways.
Do it, do it as part of the regular budget, and, and plan for it, and know that, that there will be funds, you know, I, I, I think that is the more prudent thing to do, I think that's the more thoughtful thing to do. You know, my grandmother taught me, sin in haste, repentant leisure, so I just, I'm, I'm thinking that while it's very good intentions, it might not get us where we want it to get us.
And we may have other money that comes our way.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
For the record, how this came about, uh, in the Grants Committee, Vicki presented that we had 15 applicants that we would not be able to help out this year. And I said, Vicki, how much, if we had, if we had our wishes, how much would it take to, to satisfy all 15? And Vicki said, 500,000. So that's, it wasn't pulled out of the air, or whatever you wanna say, it was, the need was there, and as a committee, we said we needed to help the public with the need. So, since then, w- we've gotten some more, uh, appropriations from the state, as I understand it, and we may have a little better opportunity to feel, fulfill those needs in the next budget year, which starts July 1, not city budget, but budget, but state budget. So, we may have answered our questions, and that happened between the time of that meeting and today, so that, I know Glenn's in the audience, and he may not be aware of that, but I think we've gotten a lot more money, and then now with maybe some CARES Act, we might be able to satisfy that need without this. This wasn't a, hey, we're just gonna try to see if we can tease the council, and see if we can get half a million dollars out of them, that, that, that half a million was to satisfy those 15 peoples.
And then a week later, we found out what the ship, uh, dis- or dispersments were gonna be.
Right. So, it, that, 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 those are the things that happen in life, that you think you're going down the road, and all of a sudden, there's either a roadblock or some other path you can take that's better, and we, and now, perhaps we need to take the better path versus that. But we, at least we're discussing it, and, and we haven't had discussions, cause the, that board hasn't been meeting, now hopefully, we'll have discussions that they can make recommendations back to the city.
Ask for, if, if there's public comment? Any public comment? And you made a statement, Mr. Sanders, which I agree with 100% from the standpoint of getting that committee, and that's been a goal of mine since January 5th, and our staff, through our attorney, and, and Mr. Callahan has done a great job. I know, obviously, there's been a lot of back and forth on how to get that, but I think we're going in that right direction now, from the mayor's office, to get that, um, committee, which is now going to be called. I wanna look at it, Housing Committee. So we wanna make sure that whenever we do, uh, information out from all of the city, uh, it will be the Housing Committee, once we have May 26th meeting, to approve all that through the reading and the public comment, and that's approved. All right, um, so the chair will entertain a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth.
Uh, the recommended motion is to request for the 500,000 in general revenue to the Housing and Community Development Division is denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
A motion to deny carries five to zero. All right, any unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right, council reports, we'll start in Ward Four.
What I just witnessed, I didn't like, that we were, I don't think we had enough conversation about expenditures of this council, cause that, that regatta does cost us a lot of money. And, and, and I, I find it hard for me to sit here and not give $150,000 to somebody that needs a roof over their house, or, over their head, and give $150,000 in public services to a regatta that now we wanna have free, really, bear, so, that's a problem with me, and, because, and I love the regatta, and I've put on regattas, and I've put on powerboat races and, and car races on the streets, and I understand all that, and, and a lot, what was told to you is not true, and I can tell you, and I can prove it if you need to, but I, I think you need to have, um, a reconsideration of this. I voted for it, but we can reconsider it, at, uh, some point, that we have a little more control, uh, of our city streets and what goes on, because I've had a number of complaints, that people are not allowed to participate in that event, and for example, one of them, out on Facebook, said, "The food over there is ridiculous, and it costs them $40 to get chicken tenders and fries." And so, I know some local, I, I, I believe that local people need to be involved, and the only way that you can get local people involved is if you've got local people that's on a committee. And, and every, every race like that has a local committee, uh, from, from the city, to make sure their voice is heard for the public, cause otherwise, when you sign the MOU, you, you've given it over to them, you have no more voice. And to do that is, I think is crazy. You just have said, "You do whatever you want within that," and that MOU is very loosely written. So, I, I hope that we'll take another look at that.
In response, Mr. Sanders, so, um, uh, yeah, I don't disagree with you, and I think that that's what we just discussed, was that, uh, you know, with you and the mayor being on the council, I think you should voice that, uh, opinion. Um, I know that, uh, this city has always said that we prefer local vendors, um, on just about everything, so if there are local, if there's an opportunity, the, this happens, this happens all the time, the regatta showed up today, and it was, um, you know, we gotta do it today, it's just the normal, the normal thing. So we could've had this discussion earlier, so now, what's being said is you're, you're now spokesperson for the council, say those things in the meeting, see if they can get them in this current regatta, there's still plenty of time.
I agree, but you haven't given, you haven't given any authority.
I think, I think, I think I tried to be very specific, that, uh, you, you're my authority on this, I'm not, I'm, I, I'm, I am not a regatta expert, you, you are, I'm not, so, um, you know, that was just my, that's why I made it so perfectly clear, that, and I don't think there's anything wrong with you saying to the people, "We'd like you to have more local people," I, I think that's a reasonable request, so, um, you know, that's, that was my intention.
Just two things, first off, I don't think we-
First off, I don't think we, as city council, need to be putting on a regatta ourselves. I just think that we, that's what we do. We hand it over to the people that have been doing it for seven years, and, you know, I'm not saying that we don't have any input, but I just don't think we need to be running in the regatta, number one. Number two, if there were misrepresentation made, I want to know what they are right now, because that's, you know, what are they?
Misrepresentation of what?
You sat there and said we were lied to. What was, what was misrepresented?
I don't know that I said that, lied to?
You basically just said it right now in your report. You said we were lied to. Okay, well.
I'm sorry?
That's...
No, 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 hold on. Hold on. I've had civic organizations come to me and say they weren't allowed to have food vending there, and I said, "Well, I don't have anything that I can help you with, because I don't have any authority to override that MOU that you can get as a local club to do that." And I've had other people that said they wanted to do things, and they weren't allowed to do that. And then, we're spending, we're already budgeting thousands of dollars to pay for this, and that goes into promoter's pocket. I mean, we spend over a hundred thousand dollars on this.
Mr. Sanders, that's incorrect.
Well, what is the correct figure?
Well, there's about, I think, Mr. McCullough, you and I talked yesterday, we're thinking around forty thousand dollars is what... Yes, yeah. Please come forward. And again, the facts matter, and that's what I, that's why I want those to be there. Because you stated a hundred and fifty in your comments, then you just now stated a hundred. I just want to get the facts.
Well, we've never been able to get a direct...
Well, yeah, we did last year.
No.
Yes, we did.
We've provided every year a detailed breakdown of our overtime cost, our equipment cost, our rental cost, all of that. For the last regatta, whenever, the 2020 regatta, our total cost in, in public works alone was just under thirty-seven thousand, in terms of everything from a labor standpoint. With rentals, it was a little bit more than that.
Did you count regular time? You only counted overtime, right?
We counted overtime. We counted, we counted any time applied to the project.
So, if you have a public works employee down there, you counted his, you divided out his time and expensed that time to that project?
Correct. We also build out all of our equipment, and put that as a cost, if you will, regardless of whether that's a real cost or not. So, part of that thirty-six thousand is equipment cost for our trucks to be sitting there. They're there anyways. I mean, so, I mean, there's no real cost, if you will. We're just applying a number to it, that if we were charging somebody, that would be what it would be.
So, the goal was to try to make it a true number, not a fixed number, just to make it look good for the regatta for the city.
And I would also tell you that from learning curve standpoint, you know, when the, when the regatta first occurred, we kind of threw spaghetti at the wall. We didn't know how much effort was going to take to run it. And so, what we've done is, over the years, and I think every department has done this, has trimmed their cost associated with the overtime that's applied. We've trimmed from fifty-eight thousand down to thirty-seven thousand over the years of this, as we apply it. And know that with the thirty-seven thousand, we were adequately staffed.
Yeah, just for historical, so, the very first regatta, Dave Gusterson turned in his figures of, it cost the city of tax, City of Bradenton taxpayers eighty-seven thousand dollars. Claude Tankersley turned in a detailed report, that it was over two hundred thousand dollars. Now, so, somewhere in between there. Now, that's a pretty big gap, but, so, but this does toss, just like the parade costs, the city taxpayers money. I'm, we now, if there is benefit, if I can see that city taxpayers are actually going to it and enjoying it, that's, that's, that's fine with me. You know, I didn't like the way it was done, I really don't, would like to not relive that, but there has always been a discrepancy over how much the taxpayers put into this. And there is a figure, and it's probably around a hundred. If we hear thirty-seven is just from public works, that doesn't count PD and fire, you know, they're on patrol, but they're on patrol down there. So, that being said, you know, I don't want to debate that, but there is taxpayers' monies that goes, that goes into this, that that's just, just like the parade, just like the parade.
And what happens in those events, there's also people staying at the hotels that wouldn't be full, so we're getting sales tax money, we're getting revenue for our businesses. And this year, again, I'm not going to keep going back, I've been here four months, I've been trying to bring as much up as we can.
Right.
And one of the questions that came up is about the local people. I think I paid eighteen dollars for a turkey leg. You know, that's really a hammock, but, and that was one of my biggest concerns with them, talking to them. So, I agree with you on that, Mr. Sanders, and it wasn't from people coming to me, it was me experiencing it. And some of the information I found out about that is, local vendors at that time are doing so many other things, but that was something that I'm willing to sit with you on, and go to them and say, "Here's some concerns, let's see if we can address them and fix them," which every year, when they've come to us, when there's been things, and I've been here the whole time, and, and they have always, nobody was walking over to Palmetto, so they got the trolleys. They pay for the trolleys with the monies that they get. The fireworks, nobody could hear, when you have a great fireworks, and there's music to it, but nobody can hear the music. They've addressed that, which costs them money. So, again, I don't believe that the city should be running events like that, and we are right now, through Realized Bradenton, other type of events, but if we want to start having an event, we need to then come up with a company that we're going to hire and create another government department. And I don't think anybody up here, in my knowledge of everybody up here, wants to create another department to do that, or add more stuff to your plate as we go. That's why, for a small amount of money, with some return, you know, and what is, what is the money we spend? We've, when you and I sat on the first one, it came through the CRA, and you said right along, if I remember correctly, "It is not a CRA event." And we got, we did, we got it out of that, because it wasn't right. So, that was a great thing. We had all those issues as we went through, and we worked through them. Is there some things that we can do? Maybe next year, we bring it up way early, and we do it for a two-year contract with a buy, with an out, if it doesn't go the way we think. And that's what I'm trying to bring, as the chief executive officer, voted by the people, and confirmed by a referendum, that the citizens wished that the mayor stayed, the police, charge of the police department, and the chief executive officer, that's what we're going to do, and that's the direction that we're going to go until something changes. Policymakers, which the five of you are, make policy, work through policy, and then move on. If you don't like the policy, and I was one of them for almost eight years, if I didn't like something, I brought it up and see if I had the support. But, we've got to continue to grow this city in a positive way, and continue to work within the boundaries of who you are and what you are as a council, and I will work within the boundaries of who I am and what I am as mayor. And that is not going to be disrespected, as long as we're in this position. So, I hope we continue to work that way, because the, my longest working tenure is with Mr. Roth, and I think, we had our debates, but we always left this room friends, and I will always want that. And that's what, I'm going to read something when it's my turn, about the friendly city, and that's important to me, to continue that for all of us. And that's something, the staff, and you made some comments about changes, you know, that we're having, good, bad, indifferent. I think we're going to be a greater city, because of our staff members that were here, and retiring, and moving forward, but we're also going to be a great city, because of all of us in this room. So, I didn't mean to get into a speech standpoint, but...
Yeah, you did. Sure you did. Good, good speech, good speech. Good speech, thank you.
And I just wanted to point out that one thing that was said by the TDC director was, about all the people it brings here. I don't know if any of you have been watching the stats coming out from the latest Census Bureau, but we are being bombarded by new residents. You know, that the southwest Florida, our region moving southwards to Collier and Lee, we're, we're getting hammered with, with new people moving in here every day. So, you know, we can say that we're bringing in all these people from, people are, people are coming here, people are coming here, you know, they're looking to buy homes, there aren't homes available. It's causing, it's causing a severe overvaluation of the housing stock and everything like that. So, I just don't want a tourist development guy taking, saying that, you know, we're getting pick, people are moving here. They're not coming here because of regatta, they're packing up a truck in New Jersey and moving here.
I think one of the things he did say is, you know, we have a lot of local people, and you've got a lot of out east people, you've got a lot of people in St. Pete that have never been to Bradenton. And I was actually eating at a restaurant, I don't know, a month and a half ago or so, and there was a nice young lady and young man, in probably their eighties, and you could tell that they weren't married, and we were sitting next to them, and they were talking, and they said something, "Well, we live in St. Pete, we wanted to go to the beach." They got to the beach, and they came back, and they stopped in a restaurant in our urban core here, and said, "We will be back." So, one little thing like that, and that's what I believe Mr. Falcioni said, is, we get a lot of the local people that come, and that's big for some of our restaurants and our entertainment on Main Street, that they love, they didn't, never been here before, but they come back one time, and then they come back, because, I've been to Lakewood Ranch a few times, I don't, I used to go there more, but now there's more to do here. So, how are we, as a council, going to continue that? So, yeah, and I agree, I don't think there's people coming from all over the country to this event, but we're getting a lot of people from our area. And another thing he said, Mr. Roth, and if you look at the TDC report that came out in March, for the, our hotels, and the money we get from the TDC for that, is, we were at fifty-six point six percent in the City of Bradenton for our hotel occupancy, money-wise. And everybody else was about eight to ten percent. So, we have created a niche, I think, that is really working right now, and every little thing we can do coming out of COVID is positive, and that's because of all of you, you know, not just one thing. And, you know, it's important to continue that. Now, eventually, I don't have any problem looking year to year, or maybe coming up next year with a two-year contract, as long as the county will keep giving us the money, then we figure it out, and we streamline it. That's important. Another thing Mr. McCullough brought up about the money, is, obviously, I've been at all seven, and even the rain out, for a little while, our staff has a good time at that, you know, and I mean, I talked to them in Ringham Waters or whatever at the time, but they, and they are not only working, but they enjoy it, obviously, they're getting extra money, but they also enjoy the atmosphere, and that's a good kudos to our staff. They do work a little harder, I think, sometimes, when they're having fun, and we all do. All right, anything other questions, for Mr. Sanders?
Yes. Something you said, I want you to clarify for me. You said yesterday, at your staff meeting, you asked the department's heads to budget for this. Regatta, regatta.
Oh, no, 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 there was nothing with budget on the regattas.
You said to, oh.
I said, I'll tell you what I said, I asked Jim to what was in budget, I asked the chief what was in budget, and they're already working through their budgets of the same thing they've had in the past. This was already considered through that budget, if that's the way I understood it from you, Jim, and Chief.
Yeah, we budget every year as, as a special event. So, there was money in this year's budget, even though we didn't have the event, there's money in our budget associated with the regatta.
So, the money that was in...
It won't be used, it will roll back into the general fund.
The general fund. So, I didn't ask them to budget for anything specific, I asked them what was in their budgets. He stated that, and I said, "Well, does that just roll over?" And he said, "No, it rolls back into the general fund." But there is, and the chief said, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you said that you put overtime in your budget for different opportunities, and it could be a lot of different reasons, but that was one of them, you know?
Yes, routinely give that overtime, it's a separate part of our overtime budget. Last year, not last year, the year, last year, we did it combined overtime and regular salaries, it was twenty-four thousand for the regatta. So, our budget, our overtime budget is much higher than that.
And one of the things that I've said early on, when I was on the council, and I don't know how, if we can continue to work through it, I would like us to see some extending our budget opportunities from, to a two- or three- or four-year, five-year budget. I know it's a living document every year, but is there a way to set us up, so then we can start budgeting for some of these things, and then live with the document year to year, what happens with taxes and income and all of that. So, we're setting it up, as Mrs. Barnaby would say, "We can't be, run a hundred percent like a business, but we can run as business-like and friendly as we can to help our citizens for future things." And that's important to me, to go forward that way. So, yes, that's, that's what I, how I said it.
Well, I was just concerned that we were already budgeting before we had the agenda item, which I didn't know was on the agenda item, and it says, "Regatta Discussion," but we voted on it, but it looks like we already planned for it prior to that, and that's not, I think, how that should be done.
That's why we put it on as a regatta discussion. That was already, and I asked them that question yesterday. Yeah, yes, from last year's situation. Because, again, I'm, I'm not much different than you, Mr. Sanders, from the standpoint of being fiscally responsible, and making sure, if we can do it for less, we want to continue that.
I understand.
And you can go back to the minutes from seven years ago and continue through it.
But I take it it's a done deal.
Well, nothing's a done deal till you vote on it. And one of you can't make a decision, like I can't make a decision, but I can bring it to the council, and it has to be a majority decision, with anything that's done, whether it's staffing, whether it's, whether it's anything through our whole process, we do. All right, anything else? Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you. I'm, I had a long list, but I'm not...
Perfect.
No. I wanted to just start off saying that a lot of times, we have meetings, and there are no proclamations, or maybe there's one, but today, we had three very worthy entities getting proclamations, and it should, it should be a proclamation for decades, because they do so much. I also, as I said, I think in the last meeting, there was, I think, Mrs. Copeland was here, and how I, I really appreciate that input and that, you know, community involvement. And of course, Ms. Betty Rhodes did not disappoint, and she brought up some very good things, and I wanted to say to her, you know, "Hey, we have a planning director and an executive director of the CRA, and we, we've been talking about those, those very things." So, it's just great to have that input, though, and know that you're on target. I had the opportunity this past weekend to have lunch with my oldest son at Oak and Stone, and walk the farmer's market, and it's different from the last time I did it. It was more vendors, and, you know, and there was food, too, some nice pastries. But, but I really enjoyed that, that was my Mother's Day, and I hope everyone had a wonderful Mother's Day. And mothers aren't just females, mothers can be dads, single-parent dads, and uncles, and just all the people who nurture and care about people in a motherly fashion. I hope they had a wonderful time past weekend. I'm going to stop there.
Thank you.
First off, as your representative for the Sarasota Bay Estuary Program, they are about to bring the, a report forward on the state of the bay. I think I've already kind of given you the heads up, it's not going to be good. But if you are interested, that executive director, Dave Tomasco, would love to come and give us a short presentation, if that, if you all so desire. Would you like me to get that arranged? Okay. And yesterday, I sat down with Marshall, and Robin, and also Jim, and I was so proud of our city. We're doing a lot of really great stuff. And so, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Jim, because I was sat there, and you were talking about what you were doing, he's like, "That's great, that's great." And they want him to come and do a little presentation at the Estuary Board, to hopefully encourage some of the other areas to do some of the great things we're doing. So, I just wanted to give him a little shout-out. And I also wanted to bring up with the chief, I've gotten a couple of calls complaining about the block, the box, and I know y'all sent someone out there, and they called me back to let me know that someone was out there, so thank you for getting on that so quick. But I didn't know if there's anything we can do to, because I know with the traffic the way it is, it's become a little bit of a safety issue, so...
Just gotta prove to Jim, I think that's part of the traffic safety committee as well, um, we've been asking for months and months for the signs, we just gotta prove through FDOT, FDOT to hit them and start hanging them, so, we think that will help with awareness, and if you all can see over there, how there, you know, particularly on night, we're, we're doing operations daily, um.
Yeah, I think that'll probably be the biggest deterrent.
I got her, myself, we'll refer it to the parking lot, but I think the signs are really gonna help.
Mm-hmm.
We hope, we're gonna kind of conduct an analysis on whether we see a difference when they go up, but we just gotta prove for those this week, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
And then, last but not least, Kwanis is sponsoring the Starlight Movie Night this Saturday from, um, at, starting at seven o'clock, it's out in the parking lot at the Performing Arts Center, and they're gonna be showing Matilda, a great family movie, so, um, if you've got grandkids, kids, family, um, I would encourage you all to go.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to, um, thank all of us up here. I've heard from some of the members, uh, in my community that live along the waterfront, and they're very excited to hear that we are concerned about the issues with flooding and stormwater runoff, and just, they, they say, "Yes, please do whatever you can," so I wanted to share that information with you all as well. Many of you will remember that I spoke about, um, the major fundraiser that the organization that I belong to, the Service Club of Manatee County, had this year. We've, we did a virtual fundraiser, we had no idea how it was going to turn out, we had our fingers crossed, but I'm very excited to say that, uh, after, after our meeting yesterday, the Service Club of Manatee County will be distributing over a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to children's charities in Manatee County, and, uh, I thought that was, that's a significant number, a significant number. I also wanted to make you all aware that, um, we have a gentleman in town, his name is Albert Few. He graduated from Bradenton High School in nineteen thirty-nine, which means he was a member of the Bradenton Golden Waves, because that's what they were back then. Uh, he will be one hundred years old on the sixth of June this year. He entered the Air Force in nineteen forty-two after Pearl Harbor, served as a fighter pilot, and is the last surviving World War II veteran from the city of Cortez. Uh, he graduated from the University of Alabama with a degree in aeronautical engineering and began a long career in aeronautics with the National Advisory Council for Aeronautics, which then became NASA, so he truly was a rocket scientist. But, um, the, Manatee High is asking for individuals that are interested to send Mr. Few a birthday card, and if you will contact me, and perhaps we can put something in our, um, weekly email that we do. Um, he does live here in the city of Bradenton now, and, um, I think that would be a worthy thing to do, uh, not, not many people make it to a hundred, so. And I would ask for prayers for my family and the passing of my aunt, Agnes Dole.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, um, two things, I'll, I'll state again, or I said earlier, that, um, uh, in light of the, uh, recent news about another retirement, that I think it's important that we move forward as quick as possible on this year's budget. Um, my, my recommendation is that all department heads just turn in last year's budget with the, with the cost of living increase, and that we, um, you know, uh, well, and then, and then also that, uh, the city administrator, uh, position, I wanted to get a report on where we are with that, I know we've got seventy applicants, I tried looking at some of them, there's so many that I need to, uh, figure out how we're, how we're moving forward on that, and then, how, what the.
I can give you an update on that when you're ready. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I talked with Colin, he's hoping to have a part-down list to us very soon, you know, where he's gone through all of them, vetted them, seen the ones that might have already got another job, you know, because even some that they applied, something else may have came up, but hopefully within, what's today, May eleventh, I think he's hoping to have something to us within a couple of weeks of a list, because he's trying to go through it all and get the final six.
Hold on a second, I, I talked to him, and he was supposed to have it to us last Thursday.
The final six?
Yeah.
Did I talk to him?
I got an email.
No, no. Schedule is right here as to when he hopes to get people the finals. He.
Well, it's changed.
It close, CBNA reports results of recruitment in May fifth, which is when he sent out the entire sixty-eight. He then uses the entire month of May to narrow down, look, to candidate reports, materials, uh, go through their resumes, um, do reference checks, background checks, internet newspaper checks, all through the month of May, with June eighth as being the target date to set, uh, candidates in front of you.
And that's what I've asked him on Monday, to see if he can speed that up.
Okay.
That's what I asked him to do, so I'm, I'm expecting to hear back from him first of the week to see if he's able to, because again, we don't want him to speed it up to the point where he gets, hasn't vetted the person, and then all of a sudden something comes up after we've looked, so, but I ask him if he can speed that up as quick as possible.
Okay, so, so, having it narrowed down to, uh, a view, a viewable number by first, first week in June.
Hopefully, right, or sooner.
And then, and then, and then we'll get together and, uh, rate them, I guess.
But he still thinks that if we, we do the rating and go through it, that we probably would be lucky to have somebody on by August first, because if you pick somebody and they have to then leave their other job, they have to get noticed, that depending on, you know, obviously, if it's, there's somebody local, but if it's not, then again, we don't know that yet. So, he would say target date would be very realistic somewhere, um, August, end of July, August would be the, a good target date, if we get lucky, maybe sooner.
Okay, I'm, and that's so, or, or sooner.
Right, that's what we're hoping for, yeah.
Or sooner. So, um, all right, well, that's, I just wanted to keep track that we're moving, we're moving forward on, on all fronts, because, because we're running a couple of, a couple of vacancies at the end of, uh, at the end of June.
So, since we're on that, or, or, anything else, I don't want to interrupt you.
Um, no, that was pretty much it.
So, my question then is, and it's gotta have to be a council decision, and it is, it's something that I've thought about for a little while, seeing where we are, is with the, um, is there an opportunity to ask Mr. Callahan, if he's able to, um, be on some sort of consulting thing, if we do not have a administrator on, because we're still gonna be going through budget, and if it's, if, I think he's amenable to it, if we can, you know, I'd have to go talk to HR, we'd have to call the state through the FRS and figure things out, but just on a consulting thing until we had an administrator in, because it's very important for budget to know that we don't miss something. Yes, sir, Mr. Callahan?
Can I just speak to that, because the reason I shook my head violently about just putting in last year's numbers is just not the way we do budgets. Um, the staff is already two-thirds of the way through their detailed budget processes right now. To just put a cost of living increase on, on somebody's numbers is, is not, is not the path to follow at this point, and I just respectfully don't recommend that at this point. I mean, we are, we have said they need their entire detailed budgets into us by, like, it's May twenty-first, and that gives all of June to start doing those reconciliations, uh, to try to get to a, a point where by the end of June, you have a reasonable budget in hand, based on the input from, you'll still have to go through your budget processes in, in public, you'll still have to do your capital, all those things, but to sit there and, it, it's the exact wrong thing, and I'm sorry, just to put a cost of living on last year's numbers.
Well, and that, that was not my goal to, it would be more of a day-to-day type thing, or, you know, week-to-week, or however you want to come up with it, if it can even happen. I don't know if it can even happen, but if the state will allow it, how do we work to move forward and to get our administrator, because we know how hard it is a year and a plus to get a planning director. If we run into any snags, we could be in trouble with some of the budget stuff with other issues coming up.
Okay, well, I, thank you, I, I, and to be quite honest, I, I, um, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not surprised by that request, because I think that I've heard the heard consultant thrown around quite, quite a bit. I just want to remind everyone that, uh, that this, this city, uh, founded in, um, nineteen oh-three, has spent most of, uh, a hundred and eighteen years without a city administrator, we've only had a city administrator over the last, the last few years, before that, all the department heads were, uh, that, that basically we were able to function with just department heads. And, um, uh, you know, in the course of time, uh, you know, the, the, uh, planning director position took far too long to get filled, uh, I don't hold council responsible for that, so. No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not interested in having a consultant.
All right, and I, and I, I would probably, the reason, you're surprised it just now came up, or not surprised, but it has nothing to do with before Monday, because Monday, we've got an announcement that came out that now makes it a little bit harder. Uh, Ms. Barnaby?
I understand that, that it's only been a few years that you've had a, a city administrator as a title, but the city has had, um, a city clerk and treasurer, and the department heads reported at that time directly to the mayor. They didn't report to council, they reported to the mayor. With what is happening, um, I would support having, uh, Mr. Callahan as a part-time consultant, I, I need to see, you know, what are we talking about, and, and if it's even feasible because of, of retirement through the FRS system. But, having served on this council when we went through a year of the, a mayor in the past not working on the budget and leaving it up to the council, and the council doing their damnedest to put it together, when you had three new council members, one, um, very seasoned council member, and one council member that didn't want to do anything except say no, it was a very, very difficult thing to go through, and I, and able to be, to, to continue to provide the citizens with the service that they not only expect, but they deserve, we're gonna need some help to get through that process, get through the budget process, and make sure that we're not leaving something out, and we're not forgetting something, and that, that we will have everything that we need for the next fiscal year. I'm not an expert on budgets, I'll tell you that right now. And I, I depend upon our staff, our department heads, and the clerk's office to bring this information forward to us and to answer any questions that I have, but it would be very difficult for this council to ride herd over a budget without having assistance coming from the clerk's office and the administrator's office.
Yeah, I, I would say just the longevity, the institutional knowledge that Mr. Callahan provides, I, I would definitely like to see him, I mean, unless he'll just cancel his retirement, but I don't think that's in the, in the works. But no, I'd still, I'd like to have his, um, his, his help, definitely.
And it would just be temporarily till we get our new administrator.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, but again, it may not even be able to happen, but the only way we can start it is to have this discussion, so then we can know, you know, it's not his responsibility to go to, to HR to find out.
Mm-hmm.
Again, anything that we find out would be brought back to this council to approve or deny. Yes, ma'am?
Is this gonna be pro bono?
There's no, he didn't shake that thing.
Well, I, I'm just gonna say this, um, maybe we should look into the, the, how this can happen, because when I became council and I'm in the FRS and now am in it in two different ways, it's complicated, so, before we, before we even get our hands in this, maybe we should.
It may not be able to happen, but I didn't want to go and start the process until it was brought up.
I thought he was gonna be a phone call away anyway.
Well, that's a phone call, not a, uh, making sure the budget, because that's a very important part, if we miss something, it's could be costly to us. And, and again, this was not in my purview and wasn't discussed with Mr. Callahan until Monday, so, you know, and that's, it's, it was not something I was thinking, I was hoping to have an administrator. I've got many calls from people saying if there's an interim time, there's different people in the community that might be able to fill some of that, but is there?
Scott Harp's already taken.
Yeah, if, is there an FRS situation that can make it happen or not? It may be absolutely not, and I wouldn't be one that would want to jeopardize his time, so.
I'm telling you.
Neither would he, so.
It can mess.
Yes, sir, Mr. Singer.
Mister, yeah, I think she's, oh, I thought she was done, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just kind of saying, it could mess, it could mess with your money. Now, I, from talking with you before, I, I, I hope you're not letting us twist your arm, I mean, this is not something you were planning.
No, the, the issue that I have had all along are, we needed to jump on this earlier. It would have been ideal to have an administrator in two months ago, and me just weighing out my time, explaining to him just what he's seeing, and that would have been the ideal scenario. As it turns out, we're now running up against budgets, because, you know, we start getting our numbers in June from the state to start, that's when you really, up till now, we're doing expenses, we're not doing revenues. I mean, I put all the revenues in that I know to, to Linda, but we still start getting our state numbers here very soon, so. The, the, if it was gonna happen at all, it's only in an advisory role to be able to help get through this, and, and partly because of what happened Monday, we don't have that position to fall back into where the clerk treasurer's responsibility has been part of the full accounting function that goes along with this, so, that's all. It's, um, I'm, I'm not trying to in any way, shape, or form do anything that would, uh, not trying to influence a new administrator, because I'm sure, I've told people who've asked me, I said, "Look, it's, it's good for change, change will be different for people, but it's not bad, it's just different." Uh, but somebody coming in, and, and I think probably, uh, Ms. Singer can probably tell you better than anybody else, is that the first two months of your job, you're not gonna know much about your job, regardless of what your experiences are elsewhere. That's a thirty-year planner who is still trying to learn about the city of Bradenton because of the nature of the job, so it's, it's pretty difficult to, to step up and it, and walk right into a budget is probably the most difficult thing. Operations will start working fine, working with you all will start working fine, where the budget is is probably gonna be the most difficult.
Well, and I also think that, obviously, your background, it was in that when you came into this city, where we might get an administrator that doesn't have as much of a financial background, and if you have never worked with budgets at times, you know, and in our way, it takes a little bit of time, so just to say automatically think that you can do the budget, you know, there's, there's different strengths with different people, and that may be something we look at when we're picking the administrator. Mr. Sanders wanted to.
Okay.
Mr. Sanders?
We do have budget amendments during the year that we didn't cover stuff, so that's, that's a protection we have that, that I would challenge you on. Mr. Roth, I found it, uh, interesting yesterday that we have, uh, an entity that has an older charter than us, it's eighteen seventy-one. The NRA and the bankruptcy court threw them out, said you can't use bankruptcy for the purposes of, you know, managing your debt this way. And so, um, I thought that was interesting, that, that that's gonna go back to the New York, uh, State Department. The budgets, uh, I just heard that the, um, department heads are supposed to have it completed by May twenty-first, which is a week from now. So, if they're done.
Budgets are not done, they will have their details presented, that's when all the work starts. That's when the work starts, that's when you end up having two million dollars or three million dollars more in requests than you have money to spend, because the departments just put in their requests. That's, that, and that comes in in an accumulative form, then we start looking at, then they have to get all the inter-fund transfers. It, it, the, the nuts and bolts of it is not what just comes from the department, I mean, that's the detail, but the, putting the budget together, the piece that is not something that everybody can do is, is the. something that everybody can do is, is the rest of the work that comes in.
Well, it has been known, like Mr. Roth said, that budgets can be, uh, well, I mean, our federal government's been doing it now for how long? Uh, reconciliation, we just take the same budget we had the year before.
You think that's right?
Do I think it's right?
Yeah.
Uh, not for maybe one time, maybe, but not, uh, but that's, don't, don't say that's not done, that's done frequently.
I didn't say it wasn't done, I just asked if you thought it was right.
Well, i- it's not right to do it that way every year, but the reason it's, the reason it's not right is because we're not getting, um, the taxpayers are not getting the benefit of, uh, good programming with infrastructure, et cetera. And it looks like, who knows with that? I mean, we've talked about that, but I don't, I didn't, I'm not trying to talk about the federal budget, I'm just talking about the local budget, because, you know, eighty percent of it is salaries. So, I mean, you know, like, you're, you're, you're actually managing twenty percent of your budget. And, uh, if you just say, "Look, you know, moratorium, no increases," we'd, we should have, it, that could be done very simply.
I absolutely agree. It can be done. I'm just not recommending that's the way you do it.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, um, it, just for historical data, Mr. Byrd, um, brought up that we need to get going on, uh, you know, city administrator almost immediately when you announced your retirement. And, and, and that was the previous councilman for Ward Five. I agreed completely. Uh, it, it took, it took, and, and I don't know how many times I brought it up before we actually started the process. I mean, it took a long time to get this going, and now I'm being told that, well, you know, it's not, it's not moving fast enough to, for this to work. Well, that's just, that's just not, I, I remember, I remember when we started an economic development department, and there were four votes no for the city administrator becoming the economic development department, the, the, and, and the development, development director. And then all of a sudden, two votes switched, and that happened. And so, this is just, you know, the fact that, the fact that this didn't happen fast enough is not on the council. So, so Carl, Carl?
I'm, I'm gonna make it easy on you, let's just forget it.
All right, it's great, great, thank you, thank you.
Because you know what?
No, I, I am not comfortable with that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit here, and right now, basically, I'm being accused of not having an administrator on board on time, and I'm accused of not having a planning director on time. It was a hundred percent the plan, your responsibility to make that happen. If you'd asked me to make it happen, it would have happened. It's that simple. You didn't ask me to make that happen.
I, I, I...
You did not ask me to make that happen.
I brought up city administrator all the time, it, we didn't move.
All you had said is, "Mr. Callahan, will you move this process forward so we can get it done?" It would have been...
But it comes, as we heard earlier, as we heard earlier, brought up that things can't be decided except for by the council and a majority vote. So, we seem to always wanna have our cake and eat it too up here, and it doesn't happen. This man, for eight years that I've been around, eight and four years, eight years and four months now, has kept coming to this council, when I was on it and now, and saying, "What do you want me to do? What do you want us to do as a city? Give me direction, give me direction." So, this is what, in, in the four and a half months I've been here now, you know, we got the, on the administrator. I was hoping you guys would do it when I was gone to get that process started, but it would have been a council vote. Council could have brought it up, but you could have brought it up, asked for a motion, and a second, and get three.
I brought it up every meeting.
So, then, good for you, that's a good thing, but you didn't get any support from the other four council people then, if you did, couldn't get it through. That's, I'm just, I, I know, but I'm saying, it all comes down to a vote. So, this is what I would like, and I, I would, if the council wants me to move forward in finding out information, it's not agreeing to anything yet, but if it can even happen, that's why I was asking to come forward. We, and, and again, I don't wanna state anything until it's stated, but we are losing two key people that are our budget people at the worst time you could lose them, in my opinion.
Do you need a motion? What do you need, a motion?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to move forward. Yeah, so, if they're, if they're...
Well, I would like to make, I will make a motion that, um, I would ask the mayor to look into the possibility of being able to use the then-retired city clerk as a consultant for us through the budget.
Not city clerk, administrator.
I'm sorry, city administrator. Well, back in the day, you were the, I still remember the letter that came out that had it, you were the city clerk and treasurer. Wasn't treasurer, it was treasurer. So, um, I, people, not all of us, not one of us is as smart as all of us. And we need assistance at this point in time.
Point of order.
If that's your...
And that my, my motion is that we, my motion is that we request the mayor look into the possibility of being able to do what the mayor has requested to do.
I'll second it.
Point of order.
Okay, questions? Go ahead, Mr. ...
Yeah, the, the city charter does not have in it the term city administrator. That, that does not exist. And it certainly does not have consultant city administrator. We're wandering so far off our charter here that it's ridiculous. No.
It, it, the, the charter also indicates that the city council can hire whoever they want, whenever they want, and assign whatever responsibilities they want to them.
Mr. Rudicell?
I, I don't know what the question is, but there's nothing that prohibits what's being proposed.
Mr. Mayor, this, the city council over the years has hired consultants in very many different areas of the city, with public works, with the planning department, um, with, with the, the police department at one time, I remember having a consultant. Again, this was in the past. Mr. Sanders, don't get your fatty acids going.
What?
I'm sorry, it was, you were looking at me like you were getting very frustrated with me, and I was trying to explain that these were things that I remember that were past council actions. So, to be able to have the council approve hiring a consultant is within our purview.
I was just gonna ask if we have a budget for it.
Well, I don't even know if it can be done yet. So, once, I want that question answered first.
Shouldn't, shouldn't, that's the chicken before the, or cart before the horse? Shouldn't we've already done that before we discuss it?
No, Mr. Mr. Callahan's salary will end on June thirtieth, and if we haven't hired anybody yet, there will probably be some extra funds that, well, 'cause obviously it'll be a negotiated monetary amount, which I think will be probably a lot less than what he's making now. So, there will be money in the budget, 'cause the money in the budget's to pay him the rest of the year, that position. And then we'll have to figure out the negotiations with the new administrator. And again, I'm, I, I don't think it's a long-term thing, it's just get us through the first parts of the budget. So, you, Ms. Coachman?
My cons, I'm just looking out for you, um, 'cause FRS is interesting.
Ms. Coachman, I, I have looked at that. The realities are either, there's two ways to look at it. There's two e- easy ways, I've thought about it. There's two ways. You continue your employment and you don't retire. The city pays me out my benefits in June so that I receive all the accrued sick and vacation that I would get in June, and those get paid out, and I continue employment till you don't employ me anymore. That's one way. The other way to go through it is if the state sometimes does allow consultants in certain circumstances to pay a third party to not do the same, exact same job you're doing. Usually it comes into problems when entities try, they get rid of somebody, but they try to keep them on as a consulting basis to do something, do their exact same job and therefore bypass the benefits and things associated with FRS. Would never consider doing something that would ever jeopardize my retirement, because the reason I selected the date I did is a hundred percent based on all retirement information. June is, June twenty-sixth is a key date when you look at how, and when you retire relative to FRS. So, it has been, if, if your concerns are about, and, and I understand your concerns, 'cause we went through looking at that, that I would not be in that situation and would only do it if it's something that, in those two scenarios, there are two ways to handle it that would be, could work. That's all. That's all it is.
And it would be, it could, it would be a month to month if it gets allowed. All we're doing today, I think, is asking to see if we can get it allowed.
Yeah.
So, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote in Ward Four, excuse me, Five. He wants it.
Don't look at me.
I don't wanna twist his arm.
Oh, you're not twisting my arm. It's still, it's still a decision that would be made in the future.
If he can only do it, right. I will say yes to that.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
No.
Uh, Ward Four is out of the room. Carrie's three to one.
And please allow me just the option to clarify something. When people get anxious or irritated or angry and their stomach gets going, it's, your fatty acids in your stomach start turning. That's what I said. I want, well, and I, I, that's why I'm clarifying. That is why I'm clarifying what I said, because the, the look I got was someone that their stomach was really upset.
I know what you meant, and I know what it sounded like.
All right.
Okay, well, I, I know what I said.
Finishing this part of my report, there's something I wanna read, um, that was in the Bradenton Town Evening Herald on June twenty-third, nineteen twenty-three. Um, it's an article that was researched and found in the paper. After some debate in which all three councilmen admitted the value of road sign advertising of the city, it was decided to commission Councilman Bell to secure sufficient Bradenton road signs to be placed in intervals of five miles from Lake City, it says this state, obviously it's Florida, um, to Chattanooga, Tennessee, along the Dixie Highway, and from Jacksonville, this state, to Columbia, South Carolina, the main highway to the eastern centers. The, the sign will be of metal, twelve inches by twenty-four inches, bearing the same as, the, bearing the name of the city and such slogans as were used on signs placed monthly within the state last year, the most popular and winning of which was Bradenton, the Friendly City. So, a lot of people think, why are we called the Friendly City? Well, the, the best we can come up with when the, uh, winning slogan was in nineteen twenty-three, um, in the early twenties, they did a, the Bradenton Chamber did and had other slogans. We can't figure out what the other slogans were yet, but now we know why we became the Friendly City. One of the, the interesting parts in reading other parts of it was the, and if you think about it, um, from that time, when they put those signs out in nineteen twenty-three, um, every five miles, I, I can just see some guy getting in a truck, having the wood in the back, and another guy just pounding the, those stakes in, screwing it to it, or not screwing, nailing to it, but every five miles. And you talk about why our tourism is so important now. It started back then, 'cause every five miles on all those highways, and the population of Bradenton in nineteen, early twenties was around over three thousand. By nineteen twenty-five, it was over ten thousand. So, some things that we did, and I say we, the council did back then, created some of our traffic problems now. You know? But it's, it's in a, in a good way, those type of things. And so, you always wondered why the Friendly City? You know, even though we have debates and things up here, we are still considered the Friendly City, and you got Friendly City Car Wash, the Bradenton Herald on their newspaper when they used to have it, had it up at the top, the Friendly City, the phone book had it, just a lot of interesting things out there that, that came about from councilmen in the time that they commissioned that, so. And then also, we had the largest trailer park in the world at that time that has created a lot of not-for-profit organizations in this community, and through the Kiwanis Club, which is gonna be celebrating their hundred years next year. Yes, sir, Carl?
I'm twiddling my...
Oh, twiddling. So, just a, just a interesting thought when the things came up and people, when the news media wants to learn about our city, and I wanna thank Jeannie and, um, lost her name from the Realized Bradenton that helped secure some of the information, and, uh, just did a great job in finding that out, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did, did you, did you pull Ed Hunsinger when I walked out to the, to the restroom?
What's that?
Oh, I don't know what I, you was in discussion about a contract with you or something, and I left to come back, and he's talking about the Friendly City.
To, to find out from FRS.
Three to one with you out of the room.
Oh, three? She voted when I was out of the room?
No, it was, it was...
Hold on, I'm not done. There's a guy back here who's got a, uh, some information, I think. He's got a contract or something? The, the gentleman back here? Did, did you not have, do you have a, you don't have one? Okay.
It's your agenda.
That's agenda, okay, I, I'm sorry, I thought you, you had something to present to us.
All right, we're gonna...
Someday.
We're gonna move on to department heads. Um, looking out there, Ms. Robin?
Uh, nothing to report to me.
Mr. Jim?
I'm after that.
Mr. Tim? We're going.
I think we're okay. Chief's uptown, he'll be back.
All right. Chief?
Hi, Dr. Hess.
We know that.
About the wonderful things that BPD is doing. Um, we are working a, currently a shooting right now involving a motorist and a homeless individual. When I get more information on that, I'll, I'll let you know. Um, two things I wanna bring to your attention. Tomorrow, you're gonna see the, um, Carousel's Icery Truck outside our department in the parking lot. You and I recall that we were at an event a couple weeks ago in Palmetto for Sexual Awareness Assault Day. What I wasn't even aware of, because that's kind of what my officers do, they don't wave their own flags most of the time, is that, uh, an individual started going into distress while he was there, um, went to the ground. I think he walked by at some point and saw something going on. Um, they saved his life, three of my officers, Santana, Craddock, and Moyet, and he wants to come out tomorrow and, um, you know, serve everybody some icy treats.
Oh.
I don't know that I'm gonna have one, but I'm gonna go out there to, to thank him, and I know that that was also on social media. Also, yesterday, I received, um, some communication from the business offices that overlooked the parking garage, NDC Construction actually, um, who made us aware of what they thought was a homeless camp on top of city garage. Um, we went up there, um, these two folks, as a matter of fact, what? You just took my chair, as a matter of fact.
[laughing]
Are you messing with my stuff? What?
He is warm.
Uh, these two folks actually, and discovered a family of five, um, mom, dad, and three kids, fifteen, twelve, and eight. The family had, uh, the father recently lost his job, seemed like he had a, a pretty rough boss, and, um, they'd used whatever money they had left for some hotels, and, um, last night, or night before last, they found themselves with no place to stay, so moved to the top of the, the parking garage. These two, uh, took it upon themselves to take them out to breakfast because they hadn't eaten in twelve hours. And last I heard, um, we've got them a hotel down at Marriott, um, there by the Riverwalk, and I will tell you, they are great partners of us. I won't tell you the, the rate they give us, um, but none of us could touch that, um, not even half of what. They, they really just do it to cover electric and expenses. They're great community partners of us. And, uh, he does have a, they have family in, uh...
Missouri.
Missouri, and we're arranging airline or bus?
Airline.
Airline. Although bus is cheaper, I keep telling them, but, um, they said it's just easier right now. So, you, you ask about those homeless funds, you know, originally it was CDBG, but you all fund that now. Um, we have a few thousand left, and, and another great example of what those funds do for us. We don't spend it, we actually come into the summer with seven thousand left, but this is gonna take a, a good hit, but we use those judiciously and particularly to help families. And so, you know, just hats off to, to these folks. The question to me from NDC is, well, we don't want them just moved along, we wanna make sure they get help, and I was like, well, of course we're gonna help them. And I think that's my response, is of course we're gonna help a family in need, and we're gonna help them, um, get home to a family that's gonna care for these kids. So, um, another great example of what these folks are, are doing, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott? Anything special?
I don't have anything, Mr. Byrd.
Sharon?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, anyone else for the good of the order? All right, just one comment I'm gonna make, and I'm gonna make this every meeting. Please, as the council, please go to the department heads and, um, don't disrespect our staff. If you have any questions or concerns, please talk to the council, or to the department head, not individual staff members, and that's very important. That's when our code of conduct, it's what our charter is, it's everything that we do. And Mr. Rudicell and I have talked, there's policies that we have and procedures that you need to make sure and do that. that you need to make sure and do that all the time, so, thank you.
Ms. Singer?
We're adjourned.